Okay, today is Monday, March 6th. The time is 5:31. I call this work session to order. We'll start off with city updates.
Madam President and City Council, I apologize. There are no city updates this evening. I just returned back from a weekend vacation and the only thing I did was get a chance to look at the COVID numbers and they are down from last week when I reported. So that was, that's good news.
Okay.
Do you have any questions or directions for me?
Any questions or directions for Ms. Lotta? No, and then we also will not have our lobbyist here tonight. I don't know if anybody, everybody got that email. He emailed all the bill tracker information and some other information this afternoon, and he will be here next Monday to present. So first, we are going to start off with the Fountain Creek Watershed District update. If we could have Ally, sure. Too close. Uh, dope. There you go.
Got it? Okay. All right. It's Ally Shook. So Elvis Presley all shook up. Yes. All right. Well, thank you very much for, for having me this evening. I know you got a full evening ahead of you. So I will, I will just dig right in. I am really excited to be here. I'm the Executive Director of the Fountain Creek Watershed Flood Control and Greenway District, and we are here to protect and preserve the health of your home watershed, your home creek. This belongs to all of us, and it is an asset, is something that we have been set up to protect. So I'm here to talk about the 14 years of progress of how, what we've been doing to protect our waterway that we all enjoy. So a little bit about me, I'm a scuba diver. I raise garlic in my backyard. I ice fish. My father went to school here in Pueblo at Ron Colly High School. So my roots are here, right here in Pueblo. I came here to Colorado Springs 24 years ago. My father went to school in Fort Collins, moved to Minnesota where I was born, on Channel, and then I came right back out here to Colorado as quickly as I could back home here. So I've been in the, in the region for 24 years now and recently took over as Executive Director for the Watershed District. I've been involved with for about 10 years, but recently started at the helm. So a watershed is an area of land, let's go back to fourth grade here, an area of land and water that drains to a common water body. We all live in a watershed, right? Watersheds are defined by the topography. So we know that water always flows downhill, but it's not just water that flows downhill. That water carries things with it, and that's where we see problems begin in our watersheds. We are also part of the largest watershed in the whole entire country. Our watershed doesn't just stop at Pueblo. It carries on all the way to the oceans. The things that we're doing here in our local community do impact things all the way out to the ocean. We have a big responsibility as a headwater state. We're also part of the biggest watershed in the state of Colorado, the Arkansas River watershed. It's the hardest working river in the country. Okay, think of all the things that happened here in the Arkansas River Basin, the agricultural, the cultural interest, the environment, the recreation. Okay, there's a lot of great things going on here, but there's a lot of risks that we have to face, right? We're dealing with drought. We're during, dealing with invasive species. We're dealing with population changes, fires. Okay, we'll get into a little bit more of these things in a little, a little more detail later. So here's our home watershed. We call it the Chicken Tender because it kind of looks like one, right? 927 square miles of land and water. It encompasses two counties and seven municipalities that are part of our watershed district. It's amazing. This is the second most studied watershed in the entire country because of the elevation drop. We've got Pike's Peak, that 14er, that elevation changes very rapidly over the 70 miles where it drops down here to Pueblo. We also have extremes in those, the elevation, the soil types, highly erosive soils. We have precipitation events in one part of the watershed where it's doing nothing in another part of the watershed. So because of all these things, people are studying this watershed to understand how we can better take care of its erratic nature. Second most studied watershed in the country. Okay, here's an example. This is happening all, all across the United States, but here's a local example of Monument Branch. This is up north in Colorado Springs. There's a teeny tiny little creek entering Monument Creek. Behind those trees you see, there's an apartment complex that was built. Well, we didn't take care of the stormwater as we were supposed to, and without managing stormwater properly, you can see that just a few short years later, this monument, this creek here is now been eroded, degraded. It's been choked out by sediment. The vegetation is gone. It's completely devoid of a healthy environment. Now, we have to go back and fix it. This is one example of hundreds of thousands in our own watershed. Okay, we see the erosion. We see the sedimentation. You go out, you could see this anywhere across our watershed. Okay? And because of all of this, people came together years ago and said, you know what? We deserve better. Our communities deserve better because this is a gem that we live in, folks. So two years, people came together and said, how can we make this better? Well, we're going to form a watershed district. And even back then, years and years, 14, 20, almost years ago now, people said there needs to be dedicated funding because of these issues are bigger than all of us. And so here we were. We just, we founded the watershed district and we were set up to manage, administer, and fund the improvements in our watershed. So here we're set up to manage funding, manage flooding. We're addressing water quality. We're improving drainage. We're protecting open space. We're developing recreation, and we do that through a board of directors. We have committees that support the technical work that we do. We ask for input from citizens. We do outreach in the communities to help our unders, our citizens understand these huge, complex issues that we deal with. Okay? We have, of course, social media. We've got a website. And here's some of the work that we've done in the 14 past years. The C means that the work has been completed. So this is 14 plans that have been done. Okay, we haven't just said, eh, let's just pick a project anywhere along the watershed. No, we wanted to make sure that the very limited dollars we have goes to the highest and best use. So we planned the work that we've done. Okay, here's all the planning work we've done. Number nine is the most recent plan, the Greenway Master Plan. This is going to get us to complete the Front Range Trail, which is a statewide initiative to make a trail from the top of the state to the bottom of the state, Wyoming to Nor, to New Mexico. It's supposed to be a whole trail through the state of Colorado. Construction work, $31 million we've invested in redesigning our creeks to mimic nature, to protect our citizens, to protect our properties. Okay, this is not enough. Okay, we've done. Here's an example, Highway 47 Bridge. You can see the concrete. This is what used to be done. Let's throw in chunks of concrete because that's going to protect our creek. Well, we realized that really isn't the way to go. What we're doing is plugging in hundreds of thousands of plants, native willows, cottonwood trees. Okay, this project alone costs $6 million. We did it. It's done. It's working. Here's another one, private property, Mr. Massantonio, $2 million project. This, this gentleman was losing acres of productive field land. We kept it there. We kept the creek in its place. It's allowed to go over its banks in a flooding event, and then it will go back into the channel as it's supposed to do, as it does naturally. Currently, we've got a few projects in our queue for this year. So we're going to continue doing the work that we do. We're, we're analyzing to make sure we're using those dollars that we have in the best way that we can. Okay, we've got annual, things that we do on an annual basis. We, we put up together a plan, how we're going to spend those dollars. We pursue grant funds to make sure we pair those dollars with the available funds that are out there. We work together with our community partners. We've got award-winning programs that we get out there and partner with the community. The Great American Cleanup right around the corner, not Tax Day on April 15th, but Trash Day. Come on out and join us. We give you the bag, the glove, the location. Come on up and do some good for your community. We also had the largest cleanup in the state of Colorado called Creek Week. This is our 10th anniversary, guys. 10 years of doing cleanups to make the largest cleanup in the state of Colorado. Okay, we have two things as we look forward. We have only about $9 million left of the Southern Delivery Fund dollars. That's how we've been doing the improvements on Fountain Creek. We're spending those dollars down. Okay, we need to spend that wisely. That's number one. Number two, we want to continue to support our member governments. Okay, we have a couple of challenges. What do we do after we spend down that $9 million? We don't have any more money in our pocket. Okay, we've identified a billion with a B, dollars across the watershed and work that needs to be done. This is without a flood and without a fire, and we know that those two, two things are likely in the coming years. So we're looking for a solution in terms of sustainable funding. What could that look like? We could look for a mill levy in the fall of 2024. We could pursue that mill levy and it doesn't happen. We could pursue a mill levy but decide before the fall of '24, for some reason, maybe it's not a good time. We could say, you know what, a mill levy is not the answer. Maybe we're going to look elsewhere for a different solution, which could be asking our membership for more money. That's a solution. We could look for more grants. Those are limited, but it's a possibility. We could look to a sales tax or some other possibilities. So as we're out here talking to member governments such as you folks, you know, what are the kinds of things that we can really do? We want to deliver for you the things that you need. We know that there's different needs for the city of Pueblo that, that are different than the town of Green Mountain Falls, for example. So are these things that might pique your interest in terms of the needs that you have here? Is it regional stormwater? Are there issues that you're dealing with, with the related to stormwater that are perhaps multi-jurisdictional? We can help with those issues. Are there larger restoration projects in the creek that we've been doing? Can we continue those projects for the, for Pueblo here? Smaller stormwater projects, this is again for kind of the, the Green Mountain Falls, the Palmer Land, or Palmer Lake Communities, some of these smaller folks. Fire mitigation, this is, you know, again, for Palmer, for Monument. They may need some, some mitigation support. Education and outreach, this is another one of our fortes. That's an MS4 requirement. We can help you check that box. Creek cleanups, you know, I know that that's an issue, you know, with these, the creek corridors are a magnet for that garbage. Tree canopies, we know a lot of communities are looking to increase that urban tree canopy. We can support you by, by delivering those events, monitoring, maintaining the projects that you've delivered, that we've delivered. We can work together on some of these needs. Permitting becomes more difficult as we move forward. Bringing in some regional training opportunities, wetland banking. So, you know, we want to just be working together, thinking together, because we know, we've seen the power that water has impacted us here in the communities. You know, it's been over 10 years that we've had a flood, but like I said, we know that time is coming. We know water's magical. One of my favorite quotes, if there's magic on this planet, it's contained in water. We've all, you know, had an opportunity to feel, to see, to hear the magic, the beauty of water, but we know that is also a very scarce resource. We see those headlines every day. So knowing that water is something that we all need use every single day, we all need to find, figure out the solutions together. So I'm here today to say, we're here as a watershed district to support you and your community here in Pueblo and look forward to continuing these conversations. So happy to answer any questions. Additionally, we are working on a new strategic plan, and we're want to talk to communities and know who you want us to be talking to in terms of leadership, in terms of, you know, thought leaders here in your community. So if you have ideas on folks, we can be having these conversations with, please send me those. Happy to answer any questions. And there's my contact information.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for Ms. Shook? Counselor Martinez Ortega?
Thank you, Madam President, and thanks, Ally, for the great, comprehensive report out. It's not a question. It's more of a comment. Good job on Creek Week. I've, we've been seeing how effective the, the creek annual cleanup and pulling in all these different community organizations, how helpful that can be, because that not only includes the Fountain Creek, and that's like the litter that fall, that comes from the interstate that blows into the water, coming down into our community, that our community's picking up and engaging in, but that annual cleanup that they know they can count on and engage with, or other nonprofits that I know that were doing their own run-in cleanup, or their own piece of the Fountain Creek, then they just incorporated into Creek Week. So good job on organizing all of that. Do you have any data, just right off the top of your head, like tonnage pulled out, just stuff like that?
Absolutely. Yeah, so as I said, Creek Week is the largest cleanup in the state of Colorado. It's nine days long, nine days, no excuses. So in the last nine, nine years, we've engaged each year at least 10 communities during that nine-day timeframe, and we've removed 150 tons of litter during that timeframe. So imagine if we weren't doing Creek Week. We'd love it if we didn't have to do it, but like you said, it's an opportunity for, you know, youth to get their service credit hours in, for, you know, service groups to get out there and do a little bit of good. And it is only an hour or two of your time to know that you're doing better for your local community, and again, our downstream neighbors.
Like I said, there, I've known a number of organizations who wanted to do these, some of these community cleanups, but including themselves into something that's already organized, like Creek Week is, makes it real easy for them. So thanks and keep up the good work.
Thank you. We will. Thank you.
Counselor Forrest?
Yes, thanks for that report. For those that don't know, we have a representative on your board, and that's Councilman Attencio, and I think he was excused this evening. Oh, oh, is he, is he online? Oh, great, great. He's our representative and does a great job. But I have a couple of specific questions and statements, too. You were really developed. You kind of evolved as a result of a lawsuit. Isn't that correct? And that's where the initial money came from, was through the city of Colorado Springs, or it could have been El Paso County. I don't remember. But that's where the original funding came for, and that's why people might be confused that you only have $9 million left. It's because you've been, you've been using the money for what it was intended for. But I think that's a big worry. It would be a big worry, not only for you, but for the city of Pueblo, that we don't replenish that pot, because there's still a lot of work to be done.
Plenty of work to be done. So the 50 million dollars that I mentioned was to offset the impacts from the Southern Delivery System. So that Southern Delivery System basically put a big straw down to Pueblo Reservoir to bring up water for the citizens of Colorado Springs. That return flow, when, once we use that water, it comes back through Fountain Creek. So we know it's going to create more erosion, more sedimentation. So the district was to use that $50 million for very specifically new, new projects only that provide the maximum benefit to the city of Pueblo with those dollars. So.
And I also thought there was money in regard to the improper planning, I think, in the city of Colorado Springs, in which they didn't take into consideration all of the runoff that was coming into the Fountain Creek.
And the district is not part of that lawsuit. That lawsuit is ongoing with the city of Colorado Springs and their stormwater enterprises, and that is City, Pueblo County, and the city of Colorado Springs Stormwater are managing those projects together.
The, the original flood that was devastating to Pueblo was in 1965.
65, yeah.
65. And as a result of that, we developed what was called the Fountain Creek Commission. And as a result of that commission, we have a levy system, which is, it protects the Lower East Side of Pueblo, which was the devastated area during that flood. But how, how do you guys control the amount of silt that continually just, you know, is constantly being absorbed by the creek?
Right.
In which it makes the 100-year flood standard of that levy kind of obsolete. I mean, if you don't pay attention to the silt.
It fills in.
Eventually, you're not at 100-year protection. You're at 50, or some other number, because that's part of your charge, too, isn't it?
It is, right. So one of, yeah, we're, we're to manage the erosion and sedimentation along Fountain Creek, and because of the nature of the creek, it is very erosive. So we get these storm events, the rainfalls, it starts to chew away the creek. So we have identified, really, we've gone up and down every inch of the creek to say, right here is a highly erosive area, and that's where we're going to target these projects to slow the bleeding as quick as possible. So we've targeted the most erosive areas, and that's where we're putting our dollars first, to make sure we can stop the erosion as, as quickly as possible in the most erosive areas, first and foremost. So we're, we're getting some of those really, really bad areas under control after we've done $30 million worth of projects. But we still have, you know, we're still collecting that data, still keeping an eye on, on that as time progresses.
And then my last question, really, might, might sound bizarre to you, but Fountain Creek, from all in Colorado Springs and down through Fountain and then in Pueblo, seems to be a haven for the homeless. And I've often said that if we were able to turn all of the trees that are along into trees and not big bushes, that we would have less homeless that would feel comfortable in setting up their camps because they don't like to be seen. And I'm just wondering whether that would be, and, and it also ironically would solve our fire mitigation in not having the, the underbrush and the trees not trimmed properly. Is that a charge that you guys could deal with through a grant or some other method?
We have been asked that quite a bit, is, you know, what are, what are we doing about the homeless? And it is not, you know, one of our five missions, but does it impact the work we do? Absolutely. It is something that impacts the health of our creek, frankly, and I, I'm of course sympathetic. I also feel that when you start to, you know, take away the health of our waterway by, you know, building a home out of the, the healthy trees that are there, you know, that's damaging to our, our healthy waterways. I think it's a larger community conversation than just us tonight, and I would love to see, you know, maybe that's something that the district could bring together, some sort of a forum with the providers, with folks that are, you know, resource providers that are, you know, providing some of these opportunities that we can figure out what is being provided, what are the different roles that are being played out there, and how can we be more engaged to know what the plans are. So I, I think it is activating our creeks to create positive places that people want to hang out at, that are safe, and that's where we're trying to go, is we're trying to create a, a waterway that is safe, that is healthy, that is an asset to our communities, because frankly, that's what we all deserve.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Mastry?
Yes, Ally, I think, you know, that is your, that's your baby, is the Fountain Creek and the watershed, and that you should be pushing back on the municipality to clean that up out there, because I've been down there. I've been along the whole side of it, and it is like a landfill down there. And then you also have a lot of drug usage down there. And if we're having to sterilize the bathrooms at the library, I can only imagine the effect that the drug and the cooking of the meth that has to the water down there. Not only that, but just also the, the defecation, and there's no place for a bathroom. So it's going to be a hard sell to the taxpayers to put an increase in the sales tax money or a mill levy if we can't provide a solution that when we are out to clean the environment and keep the environment clean, that we're doing a better job. And so I've been real big on getting that cleaned up, but I don't have the support from, council could ask as much as we want, but we also need some support and pushback. I, I welcome pushback from, from the watershed district. In order to get this cleaned up, we probably have one of the worst areas of your watershed, don't we?
For bet. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate you, you coming here and being honest about it. Thank you.
Counselor Attencio, do you have anything?
Yeah, hey, Ally, thank you very much for presenting tonight. The big takeaway from this is that of that $50 million that we got from Colorado Springs to mitigate some of the issues on Fountain Creek, we only have $9 million left, and that isn't going to pay a whole lot, isn't going to do a whole lot in terms of mitigating when we have a billion or so need within the district. So it would be incumbent upon the city of Pueblo especially to get behind either a ballot issue for whatever it's going to be, whether it's going to be a, a mill levy or, or a tax, whatever it might be. It's incumbent upon us. It should be said also, I can see that at least, I would say, close to $18 million of that $50 million was done within the city limits of Pueblo. I remember $6 million for dredging down from 8th Street to the Confluence, the 13th Street Project, and the 47th Street Project. All three of them come close to almost $18 million worth of money that was put in, in the city limits of Pueblo by the district. So, and it should also be incumbent upon us to know that everything that flows from the top of the watershed ends up in Pueblo. It's not going to be hard to find, to get the city of Pueblo behind a ballot issue, I don't think. The issue is going to be trying to get Upper Colorado Springs and people outside of the basic watershed to contribute to this effort. And if we don't, all of our efforts within time will degrade back to nothing. So maintenance of those things is also going to be incumbent upon us to, to make sure that we take care of those things. But just things to think about, guys. That's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions?
Um, Ally, it was a lawsuit against the Colorado Springs that funded this, the watershed, correct? What were they sued for?
I believe it was lack of stormwater management practices for years.
Are we liable for all of the things that we're doing here at, I mean, because like you said, we have the worst part of the, on the Fountain Creek, and I'm sure we're, it's not a very health, it's not a very healthy Fountain Creek. Are we liable for something like that, the city of Pueblo, if we don't get it cleaned up?
Oh, I, I don't know. Not sure.
Mr. Kagosa cut his hand up.
Yeah, the, the original, when Colorado Springs came to Pueblo County, asking for a 1041 permit, the county granted them their permit on three conditions. Number one, they would have to put $50 million into a fund to benefit the, the new Greenway District. Number two, they would have to spend $25 million cleaning up their wastewater problems, because a lot of wastewater was coming down to Pueblo. So they had to fix that, and then they had to give the county $6 million to help with roads. I'm familiar with that because I was county attorney then. The, the lawsuit came from Pueblo County and the EPA and CD-PHE against Colorado Springs because they were not accounting for stormwater properly when they did construction. A lot of the stormwater ended up in, in Fountain Creek, so that's separate. That's separate. But the, all the funding, the initial funding for the Greenway District was the condition of the 1041 permit back in 2009.
So the short answer is no, we can't get sued for allowing the homeless to continue to camp out and.
No, we cannot. I mean, we're not liable for that. It's, it's just, you have to retain stormwater. You have to capture stormwater. And the developers in Colorado Springs were not doing that, so the city got sued, went to federal court, and Pueblo County and EPA and CD-PHE won that lawsuit.
May I?
Uh, sure. Go ahead, Counselor Attencio.
Yeah, Counselor Mastry, it might be possible that if we didn't take care of our responsibilities on Fountain Creek, that our downstream neighbors along the Arkansas might have an issue. So it's not as if we're completely exempt from anything, because everything that flows into Fountain Creek flows into the Arkansas, and everything that goes down the Arkansas affects all of our neighbors east of, east of Pueblo County. So if we were not to take care of anything and everything degraded to a mess, a complete mess, and I don't mean with just homeless, I mean with water quality and everything else, it, it could be possible. It's, it's not out of the realm of possibilities. So we do have a responsibility to our neighbors to the east to, to make sure that Fountain Creek is taken care of properly. And that's everybody in the watershed, by the way, not just us.
Counselor Forrest?
I just wanted to say, whatever the solution is, involves the county of Pueblo, too. I just wanted to say whatever the solution is involves the county of Pueblo too, not just the city.
Oh, absolutely. They're at the table.
Cause they probably, they probably have 80% of it, 20.
Yeah, they're on our board as well.
Right. Yeah. So thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you so much. Okay. Next up, we have the City County Library District renovation update, uh, Sherry Baca and Nick Potter.
Madam President. Well, they're working their way to the microphone there. Um, may I add that, um, um, Mayor Gradisar is, is on a short mini vacations for a couple of days, but he did want to make sure and extend the fact that, uh, the internal ARPA, uh, team, um, task force as well as himself were recommending, um, an ARPA request amount that, uh, the library would.
There we go. Great. Thank you so much for having us this evening. We're very pleased to be here. I'm Sherry Baca, the Executive Director of the Pueblo City County Library District. I'm really proud to introduce my colleague, Nick Potter. Nick is the Community Relations Director, um, and Director of Development for the library. So we're here tonight, this evening to, uh, share a message with you, give you an update about the renovation of the Robert Hoag Rawlings Public Library, and then also to, uh, give you an, a sneak peek of the additional two construction projects we're currently working on, which, um, include the Barkman Library in Belmont and the Patrick Lucero Library on the east side. So with that, we're going to, uh, intro a video.
So we put together a quick video for you all, um, trying to walk you through the entire library in 15 minutes. Um, was, was going to be very fast talking, which I'm known to do, but I didn't think you wanted to hear me drone on for 15 minutes. So we did a little, uh, visual for, for you all to be able to view. So hopefully the video works.
The renovated facility has many new amenities to serve our community now and into the future. By eliminating Bates Lane, a terraced outdoor gathering space provides a great place to hold outdoor events like concerts, outdoor movies, nature storytimes and more. This change to the building also provides better access to the main entrance. Just adjacent to the outdoor amphitheater is a new drive up book drop, providing a safe and convenient way for patrons to return library items. Major improvements were made to increase access to the front door, improve handicap parking and provide a drop off and loading zone. The mobility plaza can also block from traffic and can be used to host outdoor library events in a courtyard setting. Initially located on the fourth floor and established in the early 2000s as the Infazone News Museum. The new Infazone Museum is a focal point for the first floor redesigned with a new location, layout and focus on journalism and the history of information through mass media. The update to the Infazone Museum was made possible by support from the Robert Hoag Rawlings Foundation. This exhibit is professionally curated and very interactive. It's meant to be a dynamic space as patrons move through the first floor on their way to a meeting, makerspace class or technology session. The Infazone is designed as an education exhibit. With this exhibit, we aim to collaborate with local schools and organizations to educate students on information and media literacy. The addition of PJ's Coffee in the Parkview Health Systems Community Zone provides a great venue for library visitors to grab a coffee and a pastry, sit near a beautiful water feature and gather with friends or read a book. TJ's Cafe can cater events at the library, is available for dine and services and can fulfill mobile orders. The first floor of the Rawlings Library has five meeting rooms that incorporate technology and first-class meeting room facilities. These rooms provide an opportunity for groups to meet, gather and share ideas and information. Our concierge staff are available to help book a room and provide support for technology and catering. Rooms can be reserved online via the PuebloLibrary.org website. Now located on the second floor, the children's area is a vibrant, new, safe, imaginative and playful place for kids. An important goal of this renovation was to invigorate the children's area and develop a bright new space with higher ceilings and a larger footprint. The children's area includes improved technology, areas for learning while playing, a youth-specific programming area, three family study rooms and a beautiful interactive youth-focused installation. The new children's area was designed to promote the stages of literacy development. This space is welcoming to children of all ages, inviting them in with vibrant colors, whimsical installations and computers, games and a great selection of books. Located near the youth area, a dedicated space separated by three community study rooms. The teen center provides a perfect space for teens to find library materials specific to their interests, gather for group projects, find a quiet space to do homework, access computers and connect with other teens. Four state-of-the-art study rooms are located on the second floor of the Rawlings Library. These rooms are sponsored by community partners and two have a company and library collection. The Pueblo chapter of the NAACP and the Arc of Pueblo partnered with PCCLD to provide study rooms and library materials that broaden our understanding of the African-American experience in individuals with intellectual or developmental disabilities. All study rooms can be booked online by visiting PuebloLibrary.org. This traditional library setting provides adult-level reading materials with a quiet reading area. This space is a perfect area to enjoy a favorite book while taking in views of downtown and the Mesa Junction. The PCCLD will refresh its library materials for the grand opening of the Rawlings Library, adding hundreds of new titles to the collection for patrons to browse, borrow and enjoy. Located on the third floor of the Rawlings Library, the Betty Ann Vought Local History and Genealogy Department has been redesigned and reimagined. This area houses archives, special collections, local history and genealogy research area. Now residing on the third floor, the Hispanic Resource Center has been renovated and relocated to be a key feature of the Rawlings Library. The Hispanic Resource Center provides services and resources to both Spanish and English language speakers. It promotes personal success through expanded education and cultural opportunities, not just for the Hispanic community, but for the community at large. The Hispanic Resource Center holds a collection of Spanish language materials and resources that are an important offering from the Pueblo Library District.
And so, um, you can see our fourth floor is, is, is here to come. And it's not letting me, there we go. Um, so we hope that you'll join us. You can see here, we're going to have a grand opening week here in a couple of weeks over spring break. Um, so you can see everything, uh, maybe a little bit at a slower pace at the Rawlings Library instead of our quick video. Um, and we also hope that you'll join us for our ribbon cutting that's March 22nd. Um, at 11 o'clock, we have a week-long, um, set of events for the Rawlings Library opening. Um, so we have fun things for every single day, a lot of free coffee from, from PJ's Coffee, um, a cornerstone and a time capsule ceremony, um, just some really great things to be able to feature. Um, a, a library that's being renovated, but also a library that's celebrating 120 years in its location here in Pueblo. I'll transit, transition back over to Sherry.
So we're very excited to bring the brand new, brand new and renovated Rawlings Library to the public. It's 17 months of construction drawing to an end, so we're definitely ready to unveil the bill, building and, uh, share it with the public, although it has been a phased project. So different floors have gone offline, um, at a time as we've been renovating other areas of, of the library. Um, the next project is our Barkman, uh, library renovation and expansion. So in 2019, the library district commissioned a master facility vision plan. And within that is a, um, desire to renovate all seven of our library buildings in Pueblo County over the next decade. So the Rawlings Library renovation was the first in the lineup. The next two are already, um, to the, uh, pro-, through the process to, uh, construction documents. The Barkman Library will break, uh, construction will break ground, uh, August of this year. So Barkman Library, I'm sure you're familiar with it. It's at the corner of Jerry Murphy Road and Bonfort Boulevard. It is a 1990s construction building. Um, the reason why it's picked as the next library to go in succession is because prior to the COVID-19 health pandemic, it was one of our busiest library locations. So it's definitely in need of renovation and has been well-used over the years. We're just really excited to, uh, to, uh, bring a newly refreshed space to the, um, Belmont area. You can see here, it's got a couple facets to it. So, um, we are expanding the parking lot right now. The parking lot sits sort of at a, um, a, uh, diagonal to the, the building itself, but we want to square it up and increase the parking quite a bit. There's also a feature that would provide ADA access off of the, the library building itself, go over the drainage ditch and drop down into the green space park. So right now you have to access the park through the parking lot. So to be able to come into the library and then, um, head on over to the green space area, you can do that through ADA accessible, um, walkway. And you're seeing here that part of the construction documents call for a beautiful aesthetically pleasing bridge that would go over that drainage culvert and drop down into the, uh, greeny, green, green grass space. Here are the construction renovation and expansion budget. The renovation itself is increasing the footprint of the Barkman Library by one-third. So the project itself, and it mirrors pretty well the Lucero Library construction cost, but it's sitting at almost 3.8 million. We've identified it, we have identified funds equalling 3.3 million, um, as far as, um, today's date. And that does include $250,000 of, um, we're hopeful about ARPA funds, uh, contributing to the project. But that does still also leave fundraising needs of 420,000, almost $421,000 for the project. So we're definitely committed to, um, doing what it takes to, uh, get the Barkman branch renovated. So this is the, the redesigned layout. You can see the Barkman branch is everything from the, um, right of the meeting, the new meeting room space. So that meeting room on the left, which is in blue, it is the brand new addition. So it would increase the meeting room capacity from about 15 people to, uh, 45 to 60, depending on the layout. So the Barkman branch will, um, have quite a bit more versatility to it. And for the first time in its history, it will have dedicated teen and maker space areas within the layout of the existing, uh, footprint. So we will refresh all of the systems, security cameras, new equipment, um, and, you know, give it pretty much, uh, a, a complete renovation inside from all furniture and fixtures and a new collection, um, that would revamp all of the books within the facility.
And as Sherry mentioned, we'll be, um, renovating two facilities within the next few years. So Barkman will go first and then we'll move over to the Lucero Library. So that's at the corner, excuse me, um, of Monument and, um, Eighth Street, um, here in Pueblo. I need to get to my right page. And, um, you know, this, this location is really important. Um, it not only is across the street from Rizley Middle School, um, providing a great place for those, for those students. Um, it's, um, connected really to the Public Community Health Center. Um, and then you can also see that it's within five QCT areas. And so, um, it's really strategically located in that area of the east side in a low-income area in Pueblo to be able to strategically serve not only those areas that are immediately adjacent to us, but also these neighborhoods um, and these QCT areas. We're within walking distance of Bradford Elementary School, Parkview Elementary School, um, and within a lot of these areas within the east side that I'm showing up here, um, on this graph. And this library is very, um, is very used. It's a very popular facility, um, in a way that, um, it kind of outgrew what we really anticipated in a very early fashion. So we have more than 150,000 visits per year. Um, with our population of Pueblo, the population of the east side, I think that that very clearly shows how widely used this location is. Um, we check out more than 100,000 library materials per year. Um, and then we are very reflective of that community that we serve within that location, providing programming specifically for that location that includes game prevention programming, after-school snacks. A lot of times that might be a dinner for a child, um, that's coming to the library that isn't going home to a dinner. Um, we're a community hub for connectivity. We provide English classes, um, and free information and education, um, and education and entertainment materials and services.
This is a redesigned front elevation of the Patrick Lucero Library. And you can see on the right-hand side is the floor plan. The addition is on the back of the building, which is the new meeting room space and a, a brand new foyer. So the front elevation, um, you can kind of see the existing front door, which is, if you look at the elevation, it's facing Rizley Middle School. It no longer will be the front door. The front door is going to reorient facing the Pueblo Community Health Center Clinic. So it's going to be a really nice, um, connection to, um, you know, the, the lot and give much more space for meeting, uh, rooms and such. The next slide will show you a little bit about the existing building. So you could see it's more of a square. Um, we're going to fill in what is existing right now as the front porch and create interior space for that. And the next slide, I think, will show you the, the, the two addition areas. So the meeting room reorients the front door facing, uh, west and then also, um, filling in the existing front porch area. So it does increase the square footage by one-third. And what's interesting about this building, it's one of our newer buildings is, and so you would ask yourself, well, why are we renovating a building that was constructed in 2014? The answer is very similar to Barkman. Prior to the COVID-19 health pandemic, Lucero and Barkman were our busiest libraries. And so it just made, um, just a huge amount of sense to increase the square footage. Um, if you've ever been at the Lucero Library after school, it's overrun with youngsters and there's a lot of things going on. So we're excited about expanding its footprint and, and unveiling that to the community. Again, it's very similar in construction cost to the, the Barkman branch, almost 3.8 million. Here we also have identified funds of 3.2, meaning the fundraising needs still exist on that project of 580,000.
Don't be alarmed. That's just our new beeper to make sure everybody's on task. I don't know why it's continuing to beep, Mr. Clerk. Thank you.
And so that, that's the update on not only the Rawlings renovation, but gives you a, an idea of what's to come. Um, all of our other library locations will follow in succession. I think we'll head to Pueblo West after 2025, um, finishes up the Ra-, the Lucero Library renovation. But it's an exciting time for the library. There is no rest for the weary for sure. We're keeping going and we're just really excited to share with you the updates that have happened. And we hope to, um, welcome you, everyone to our Rawlings renovation, uh, grand opening.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Baca and Mr. Potter. Is there any questions? Counselor Martinez, take it.
Um, I have been, like, very, uh, after school and, uh, whether we're using that. I know it's a book. Um, I've had a number of meetings the last year, uh, whether they're reoccurring or we just find a little slot and put it in. Staff is always very, very helpful. Um, but it is funny, really funny after school that's out. You can also, there's also a void in those, but house, house in, uh, Rizley Middle School. Whole library is getting, oh, it's, it's wrapping it down.
Yeah.
Um, it's, it's really awesome. Um, I just have one quick question. Um, of the millions, uh, that we still need, one and one from the, uh, Barkman and five, um, federal library fundraising, um, and I know that you're going to ask us for ARPA money, I'm sure, uh, as we mentioned. But, uh, I'm curious, what has the county, what is the county, uh, contribution or commitment from their ARPA dollars?
That's a great question. So they definitely, just like the city did partner with us on the Rawlings renovation, the county has also done that. Um, we have not yet started our fundraising in an official capacity for Barkman and Lucero. So we would likely be heading there next.
And.
They are aware of the project.
They are aware of the project and part of the reason that you all started first is that the Barkman Library is kind of uniquely situated where we're adjacent to that park, we're on, um, city property. And so that conversation really started with, um, that, um, that mobility kind of access to the park and to the library. So that's where we started with you all first.
And that, that's interesting. So Barkman sits on land owned by the city. Um, however, we run the, the Barkman branch and are responsible for the building and all of the library operations upon which. So it is already a partnership between the library district and the city of Pueblo.
Counselor Flores.
For, uh, it's just great to see, uh, our libraries updated like that because things are really changing too with technology and, uh, all the other things that are happening. Uh, what kind of relationship do you have? Because Rizley is right across from Patrick Lucero. What kind of relationship do you have with the district, District 60? Uh, it, it seems like, uh, there's really a lot of, uh, cooperation that should be there. It's because I think you're, you're doing the same. Because I think you're, you're doing the same thing. You're focused on kids, you're focused on their education, on all the things that they're learning there.
That's a really great question. Thank you for bringing that up. It's very true that we're very close to Rizley Middle School. And so there's just natural collaboration between the library staff there at the Patrick Lucero Library and then of course the Rizley staff. But I would say overall, we're very well connected with District 60, District 70, our charter schools throughout the community. In fact, Reading Pays District 60 and 70 have been extremely wonderful partners with us. But we, we partner on everything from after school snacks to safe places to be, maker kinds of activities, literacy projects, we can go on and on.
Yeah, I, I do think that the Reading Pays program that you all allowed us to do really strengthened our partnership with the districts, especially during like the time with COVID. So we did a lot of outreach during COVID, but then Reading Pays just kind of brought that to the nth degree where we enrolled entire schools through our Connect Ed program for the, for Reading Pays program. And that was a two-year program that I think we're really able to springboard into the future to even have a more strengthened relationship with them. Because really the sky is kind of the limit with the work that we could do within the school districts. And I think that that really springboarded us into trying to dive into that and make sure that we meet all those needs and have a great relationship with the districts as well as with the private and charter schools in Pueblo.
Thanks for answering my questions. I wanted to congratulate you again, Sherry, for your taking over.
It's been a busy time, but the library, it, it is a busy place. So it's really exciting to join the team in this capacity.
Thank you again.
Counselor, my street, did you know something?
No.
Mr. Potter, do you know how much money you guys have left in the Reading Pays? Because I think it was a million dollar allocation over the last two years. How much has been spent? How much is left?
So yeah, it's, it's a little bit over $900,000. So we actually just did an allocation for $943,000 for two schools that we enrolled. So we enrolled Swallows Charter Academy and Caesar Chavis Charter Academy. So we're, we're, I think we have about $80,000 left with the program. So it's been a huge feat because about 52% of the kids that enroll in the program finish it. So to be able to have 10,000-ish kids complete the program, we've had to enroll about 20,000 kids into the program to get it to, to be successful and to be complete. So we've pretty much spent most of the money that you and the county have given us.
Good, good to know. And Mr. Kagosa, can you tell us how this 250,000 would fall under ARPA?
Well, the mayor and I have, have talked about Barkman qualifying for ARPA money because the parking lot that's going to be improved will, will have access to the school and to the library. So we are focusing now on Barkman.
And how does that fall under the ARPA money?
Well, we're, Barkman, depends on whether Barkman's in the QCT. I don't know if it is or not, but.
Are we going to know that before we go any further with this one?
Absolutely. Yeah. I, we, we can use money and, and the connection would be to benefit students at Rizley, use the library and then improve educational opportunities. And with those facts, we can check an ARPA box saying it qualifies. We're, we're in discussion right now. I, that, that's all I can tell you.
Okay. Ms. Lana.
Madam President, it also, since it is city property and with our city attorney's recommendation, would qualify out of the lost revenue government services bucket of funds if it does not meet the standard ARPA.
I, I may have misspoken. Lucero, Lucero is, is next to Rizley. So, but yeah, if, if we improve that, that parking lot at Barkman, that qualifies under lost revenue government services. And we still have money in that bucket. So.
Okay.
Apologize for the confusion.
Thank you for the clarification. Any other questions?
I just have one with council's direction. Can I take back the message to move forward with the 250,000 out of lost revenue for, for Barkman's parking lot and bridge to the, to the park, to the city park? Or would you like some additional information? I also, it's the end of the month now, so we have the updates on, on the ARPA dollars and the balances both in lost revenue and basic ARPA that I can send to you by email tomorrow.
Okay. Yeah, I'm okay with moving forward on this. But before I think we vote on anything else, I know I've been asking for a complete list of everything that you guys have in the, the pipeline coming before council. And so I think that I and maybe the rest of the counselors would like to be privileged to some of those ARPA requests and not just have one once a month so that we actually know what's, what's in the queue. So do you have, is there support moving forward for this request?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next up we have PCC, Dr. Patty Orjavec, Lynn Ross and Eva Tapia.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening and thank you for inviting us to give you an update on our nursing and allied health teaching center on the campus of St. Mary Corwin. We are three very passionate women and we could probably keep you here until 10 o'clock at night talking about our project. So I first of all want to introduce my colleagues. This is Eva Tapia, who is our Director of Simulation, and Lynn Ross, who is our Director of our Human Anatomy Learning Center. Again, we could talk forever, but we have instead prepared some videos for you. And then we will add a little bit to that if we have any time left. We want to conclude though with a message from a student because I really think that that capitalizes on why we're, what, what, what the why is for this project. So first of all, just a little bit of general information about the project.
Pueblo Community College's state-of-the-art nursing and allied health teaching and learning center, located on the St. Mary Corwin Hospital campus, is a unique and innovative approach to addressing the region's healthcare needs. Once a functioning hospital wing, the tower has been converted into classrooms, learning labs and study areas, allowing for simulated real-world experiences as students learn and grow into highly skilled practitioners.
It has always been my vision that the Pueblo Community College student that is studying to be a nurse or in any of the allied health profession, they would get up in the morning, put their scrubs on, get in their car and drive to the hospital parking lot. They would walk through the door, smell the smell, hear the sounds, go to their classroom or to their lab or to the simulation center. And they would experience what they will experience once they have those competencies and they go out into the real world to work.
We have the entire east tower sitting there and the need was there, the opportunity was there. We sure didn't want to take the building down without looking at all options to utilize the space. So we have six floors of an actual hospital with a pharmacy lab and a surgical tech lab and everything that's needed to properly train hands-on experientially students for the healthcare field.
If you walk onto the second floor, you will walk into what was the old ICU and where the nursing station is and the old patient rooms. Now there are vignettes in every single one of those rooms where students go from room to room and they are learning different skills. There's different scenarios that challenge them to be the best that they can be. When you walk down the surge tech hall, you will actually see a simulated surgery set where the students are engaged in the surgeries. And it is absolutely amazing what the students are learning in this environment.
The classrooms that have been created, the situational labs that are there has been incredible.
In order for our programs to grow, we need to be able to have clinical sites for our students to go in and practice. Specifically in the field of nursing, we are allowed to offer 50% of that clinical experience in a simulated setting. So by being able to create the simulation centers, our students can get the best of both worlds, really. They practice in a simulated setting and then they go and work in hospitals and other private practices to continue to gain the skills that they need. Ultimately, what we want to be able to do is expand the number of students that graduate from Pueblo Community College that are available to work in our hospitals and all of the various practices of allied health that are necessary in a community that has an aging population and quality of healthcare is so terribly poor.
According to Colorado Department of Labor data, Colorado needs to fill 4,000 registered nursing jobs each year with the job market for healthcare practitioners and technicians expected to grow over 20% in the next decade.
I think it's going to add additional educational opportunities for those that may or may not have those in the southern part of the state. Having these educational opportunities, not just for those residents of the smaller rural communities, but also our own staff, people that work in the hospital right now, that can enhance and increase their educational benefits as well.
When we are able to expand our programs, we believe that we can add another 250 to 300 graduates a year and put them into the workforce. Where St. Mary Corwin Hospital is located really gives us an opportunity to help the best of our community grow and rejuvenate itself back to the way it was at one point in time. We were so fortunate to have support from the federal EDA, the Pueblo Urban Renewal District. We have had support from the county commissioners. So this isn't just a private donor initiative. We have had city and county support. We've had state support, federal support. All of us collectively want to ensure that our community, the Pueblo community continues to thrive and grow.
The Teaching and Learning Center comprises a total of 450,000 square feet with only 60,000 now occupied by classrooms, labs, offices, student spaces and even a daycare, leaving lots of opportunity to expand services and provide economic development with other partners.
I think this is a one-of-a-kind project, let's just say a first-of-a-kind project because there's a lot of hospitals throughout the country that are not being utilized right now. Hospital space that either hasn't been maintained or looking to be raised. We found a different way to do that with Pueblo Community College, St. Mary Corwin. Centura Health to find a way to build a long-term lease that will allow public community callers to raise the funds necessary to convert this into a more livable, functional campus that is specializing in healthcare workers.
What sets Pueblo Community College apart is that it is not a building. We are teaching in a hospital setting.
Special thanks to Mike Cafasso, Centura Health, the PCC Foundation and all the private and public donors and faculty and staff who made this Teaching and Learning Center possible.
So before a student ever gets to the Teaching and Learning Center, they have to go through a, a series of prerequisites specifically in the biology area. So this next video is going to show you what we believe is one-of-a-kind human anatomy and cadaver lab environment that Lynn Ross is in, in charge of. And she has basically created this.
This facility is a phenomenal marketing tool for PCC because it is so, it is so unique. There is nothing like this that I know of anywhere in Colorado. What this facility enables is a clear visual of anatomy.
This program has many different tools for learning. We have the models, we have anatomy and clay. We also have the cadavers and two anatomage tables.
I know that we are the first college in Colorado to have an anatomage table.
The anatomage tables are very unique because it's like having a 3D version of our cadavers. So instead of having to lift and move and move layers of tissue away by hand on the anatomage table, we can touch and remove things very simply with one swipe of a finger. You can zoom in on something that you can't see normally on the cadaver, such as nerves, veins, arteries.
I really don't know how many colleges and universities have put the cadaver studies and the anatomage table together. What you don't see with the anatomage table is the fascia and the connective tissue that surrounds every organ. So you get to see that on the cadaver, but then you have the maneuverability of the anatomage table.
But also with the cadaver, it's a negative pressure. Therefore, we don't get the formaldehyde smell out in the learning area or the classroom. If you're going to a traditional college or outside of our area, you're not going to get that one-on-one that you really want to get here. We have smaller class sizes, therefore you get a lot more attention in these classes than you would anywhere else.
The mission of the lab is to help students to make anatomy make sense. This unique design is really for student-centered, hands-on collaborative anatomy exploration. It's just so, but so, so unique.
And we have just one more quick video, and this is a, a message from a student. And then I'm going to give these ladies an opportunity to talk because I know they're just dying to. But this is, this is the why, why we've done all of this.
Hello, everyone. Please let me share with everyone here what a great honor it is for me to be standing here in front of you today alongside so many great and respected people. As introduced, my name is Jason Carter. I'm a proud member of cohort number eight inside the Surgical Technology Program and soon to be class of 2023 graduate with honors. Thank you. I cannot thank Surgical Technology Program Director Diana Montoya enough for all that she has done for me. Throughout tireless hours of education, direction and mentorship, she has shaped me into an individual ready to take on one of the most stressful occupations in the world. She done this not only through strategically planned lesson plans with professors, Nadine LaForme and Josh Strong. She done it with the aid of this amazing learning center. The ability to acquire a medical education in a setting like this has put me in what I feel is a huge advantage over those who are not as equally as blessed. The mental realization of what I had that first day in August of 2021, when I started this program, is something that I will never forget. I pulled into the student parking lot and I seen this huge hospital. Walking up, I was in total awe. Then, when I walked through the doors and I heard the actual real sounds of a functioning hospital and I seen the various medical staff going about doing their respective professions, I felt like I must have had a smile on my face equal to that of a six-year-old child walking in through the gates of Disney for their first time. When those doors closed on the elevator to take me to the sixth floor, I literally said out loud, this is going to be amazing. Now standing here in front of you in 2023, I have to tell you, it was way more than amazing. I learned my respective profession in an environment where I will actually be employed. I was not stuck in a classroom, distracted from hearing my instructors' lectures by the sounds coming across the hallway from a wood shop class going on. I did not have to sit in the back of a classroom and tell myself mentally, just make it through two more semesters. The time to be at the hospital is right around the corner. Only then to probably show up with fear and intimidation pouring off of me in front of everyone that I would soon meet. No, I was enjoying experiences from real. No, I was enjoying experiences from real O R personnel coming into my classroom. People like Eric and Kathy from here at Saint Mary Corwin Hospital coming to share with us as students firsthand experiences in the operating room. Answer our questions. And not only that, but allowing us as first-year students to come down to the operating room to actually see a true surgical procedure performed in real time. The surprises did not stop there. We also had visits from various product reps who would come onto our floor to do demonstrations and teach us the different prosthetics that they provided. We were literally learning how to do total knee replacements, total hip replacements in our lab room from these same people that contract with the hospital for their supplies. I mean, how cool is that? My appreciation of what it must have taken to make something like the Teaching and Learning Center happen, words cannot describe it. The environment definitely sets the tone of what is to be expected, and it prepares you for what you are about to become. I will forever be grateful for experiencing this unique type of learning environment while attending Pueblo Community College. And I will take with it the feeling of confidence, knowing that I am going to succeed in my profession because I was educated in a hospital to work in a hospital. Thank y'all.
So I'm going to give Eva a chance to just-
Thank you, Jason, and that's why we do what we do. So thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Eva Tapia, and this is a long time coming. We first started an education collaborative with Saint Mary Corwin Hospital in two thousand and twelve. So it's taken us ten years to be where we are right now, and the growth has been astounding. The number of students that we now have in our programs has gone up by at least a third, and we hope that we're going to grow that even more. Now with the space that we've gotten, we know that the growth to all of our health areas are going to grow exponentially. So we appreciate where we are. I especially grew up about four blocks away from the hospital. And being back in the neighborhood and being at Saint Mary Corwin Hospital with our students is a wonderful opportunity for us. So as you saw with our search tech student, we could probably have that same speech with hundreds of students that are now at the hospital. So with nursing, we can use clinical time, which has taken some of that burden away from our program. But as you know, clinical space for nursing students especially is very difficult to find. So we really appreciate the partnerships that we have with Parkview Health Systems, as well as Saint Mary Corwin, as well as the Colorado Mental Health System that we can bring our students and learn there. So this is one phase of their education, but definitely appreciative for all of our students and all of our staff. And very grateful to P C C that they were able to support these health programs and a lot of fundraising, so appreciative to everyone who donated to this project as well.
The common thread that's weaved through the fabric of health professions and actually through the education of students from start to finish is that hands-on experiential learning that enriches their education so, so much. It's impossible to know that, that impact. We just know that those students that don't have that same kind of experience, that hands-on experiential experience, they're missing out. Our students that come into our programs, they do so because they are hands-on caregiver givers. And so that's the way that we teach. We tailor our teaching to the individual preferences those students and the educa- and the education and the industry that they desire to go into.
Thank you, ladies. Any questions, comments? I just, I, I took a tour and it is remarkable what you guys have done. And it was so cool to see the hands-on learning experience. There was actually students there when we were able to walk through. And so kudos and congratulations for all your hard work. You're really putting Pueblo on the map in the healthcare industry and very proud of you guys. Councilor Martinez, what do you have?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you Patty, Lynn, and Eva for, or Eva for coming here and, and just giving us, us and the community an insight on what's going on over with the old Saint Mary Corwin wing of the hospital. One quick question or two quick questions, how much did the foundation, the corporate and private donors, how much was raised and invested into this project, and how long did that take?
Well, we began the fundraising project four years ago, and we thought it was going to take us a year. But then COVID came along, and so everything came to a halt. Our, our, we raised eight million dollars for the actual renovation of the project, and four million of that came from the E D A. The balance of it was from private donors and private foundations and Pura and the county commissioners. Eighty-two, eighty-two different entities in total. And then we were bequest the balance to get us to another, we, we will request another seven million dollars from Mary Jane Volker. And that endowment is earmarked, half of it is for student scholarships and half of it for the college to maintain the facility in perpetuity. This is not a state building, and so any, any infrastructure challenges that we have, the college has to pay for it. So we wanted to make sure that this would not take away from the general fund and all of our other programs, and we were able to accomplish that.
That's phenomenal, and the, the list that you have here of all of these donors, that's very impressive. Thank you, Patty, good job, and thank you, ladies, for your continued passion because we definitely need more nurses.
Councilor Mike Street, did you-
Just want to say thank you for what you've done. It's a great, successful project. It's a very beautiful facility, and I'm just really something for Pueblo to be proud of. Thank you, ladies.
Councilor Tensia, you have anything? I don't think he does. Oh, okay. Okay.
No.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us. Thank you.
Hey, next we have Turn On The Lights For Safety, Julie Rodriguez, Crystal Estrada, Ms. Solano and Chief Noler. And Ms. Patty.
Madam President, City Council, I can start us off with, again, the mayor's support recommendation and, and request of City Council to approve the use of ARPA funds. Yet to be determined whether it's basic ARPA or the lost revenue component. And when we finish with the Turn The Lights On For Safety presentation this evening, the, the request will be a two hundred thousand dollar match to the incredible contribution from Black Hills Energy to Crime Stoppers of Pueblo to facilitate a grant opportunity. And with that, I'll turn it over to the brain power over here, the creative ideas as they listen to City Council on a regular basis and are out in the community listening to small business.
Thank you, City Council, for having us here tonight. I'll give you a little bit of history on how this all came about. Last fall, when the police department was having their community meetings with small businesses, Patty and I were sitting in the back, and we were listening to some of the conversations that were going on with small businesses and their concerns about crime. And then also they were talking about, a lot of them couldn't afford to do upgrades to lighting, cameras, that sort of thing. And so Patty and I left the meetings, and at one point we started to talk about what programs does Black Hills Energy have through our energy efficiency program that we could have, we could help small businesses. And we realized that we have access to programs and to contractors through Black Hills Energy and our programs. But we also then decided to start, I'll call it our internal campaign, where we went to different departments at the end of the year and said, what do you have that we could take from your budgets that you're not going to spend? And it really became, I would call it an internal fundraising effort. And at the end of this, we had two hundred thousand dollars that came from different departments across the, the Black Hills Colorado Electric Service Territory. And so then in conversations with Laura and the Chief of Police, Chief Noler, we came to them and said, well, how can we partner? And so that's where Lights On For Safety came from. And then later, the mayor heard about this project and came to us and said he would possibly have another two hundred thousand to match for a total of four hundred thousand. And so that's really where this came from. It's a need we see in the community and between the partnership of the city and Black Hills, we think this will be a, a good jumping off point to help, help these small businesses who need camera systems. They need new lighting, exterior lighting, and, and just a way to address what they're, they're needing in, in the community right now. So I, and I didn't even introduce myself, Julie Rodriguez, and I'm the Senior Community Affairs Manager for Black Hills Energy. And then with, with me, I have Patty Olanik, our Energy Efficiency Manager, Chief Noler, and Crystal Estrada. She's the, the Board Chair for Crime Stoppers of Pueblo. Patty, I, I think it's probably a good thing for you to talk a little bit about the program.
Sure. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having us tonight. So as Julie mentioned, we kind of modeled this after existing programs that we have. And currently, we have a program for small businesses. It's called our Small Business Direct Install, where we provide lighting and HVAC system rebates and assistance for our small businesses. Small business, fifteen thousand square feet or less is the criteria. And in our program, we offer a free energy audit. And so we thought we could tie that in with looking at if a business needed security lighting and/or we're going to add cameras to this program, which we don't currently have. So the process would be a business would apply, and we're going to open this up on April third. They would apply, we would review, make sure that they, the company, the business is up to date on their taxes and also their business license in the city. If so, then they would qualify. We would send out an energy auditor. We have consultants on our team, the Black Hills team that we've worked with for years, you know, at least five years, that have helped us with the Small Business Direct Install Program and they, which is Franklin Energy, and they do fantastic work for us. So they will help us with this program. And then there is another audit, and please, I want to come up and talk about that, that the police department offers in conjunction with the small business or the lighting audit. So, Chief.
Yeah, so what we offer is it's a national program known as Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. Basically, what that does is specially trained officers can go out to different locations, look at their, their facility and see ways that they can redesign or change their facility to try to reduce crime in that area. Couple of real low, low-hanging fruit examples would be, you know, cutting down shrubs that don't block windows so that law enforcement driving by can see in, not blocking the access to the doorway. You know, different types of lighting, where to put lighting that would discourage loitering at certain hours and that kind of thing. And that's something that we would do at these businesses as well as offer that free evaluation of their, of their property.
Great, thank you. And so we, we believe and feel that these audits will provide solutions that will increase the customer safety and help save energy at the same time, working in partnership with each other, and will provide interior and exterior lighting and cameras for these businesses.
Ms. Solano, would you talk about the, the budget?
Next slide, please, who can? Thank you, thank you. Julia Cordova is the ARPA Coordinator who's facilitated in the mayor's office all of the incoming requests and has really become also easily researching for the internal team, other similar ARPA projects throughout the country. And voila, found one in Aurora that started in March and is currently in process. You know, Aurora, Colorado, however, has far more ARPA dollars than the city of Pueblo. They began with a very similar arrangement, however, not with Black Hills Energy, but yes, with the Aurora Police Department, also engaged in placing cameras and the appropriate review of, I don't know, Chief, it might be a list of fifty crime prevention audit things that they leave the business with. They ran through their three million dollar application with four hundred business applications in the first few hours. They went back to City Council and asked for an additional two million. And we're in the process of, of working with the city attorney to determine with Aurora, did they use basic dollar ARPA or did they use lost revenue? Well, Black Hills Energy has a contribution of the two hundred thousand and the request for, for all of you to support through ARPA dollars, the match of two hundred thousand dollars. And I, and I know the facilitation of our ARPA dollars have been through, through a nonprofit. And so our nonprofit partner in this public-private partnership is really the nonprofit agency of Crime Stoppers of Pueblo, where the contributions from both Black Hills Energy will reside and where the cities with your approval will also reside. And Crime Stoppers of Pueblo has then taken the, the lead, and I'll turn it over next, that, that to, to Crystal, who can tell you how they will facilitate the collection of the applications. They'll facilitate with Black Hills Energy the contractors. So there's none of this money will go directly to any small business. It will be facilitated through the contractor to finish the work. We also had conversations, I did with Aurora, that they initially had in their documentation online that the grant application was up to ten thousand dollars. And they quickly found out that they had to raise that to fifteen thousand in order to complete a project. The costs were just a little bit higher than the small businesses, and they said to me, if we wanted to have a project finished, if we wanted to have the audit done, if we wanted to install lights, if they wanted to have the appropriate cameras installed, it was going to cost more than ten thousand. And feeling like if they gave the money to the small business, they may never come up with a match to finish. So to facilitate crime prevention and reduction, they did not. The city of Aurora is managing this project, but they also are not transferring grant dollars to small business. They are facilitating directly to contractors. So in Pueblo, with the help of Crime Stoppers of Pueblo taking that step forward, we feel like it'll, it'll operate very smoothly with Crime Stoppers, the Police Department, and Black Hills Energy.
Okay, any questions? Councilor Martinez.
Thank you, Madam President, and maybe this is what you were gonna, is it, I'm sorry, Crystal? How are you going to select the contractors?
That's a great question. So going through all of this, we're still working through the logistics of, of that. Now, what I can tell you is that we are going to have a member from each one of the departments who is going to be on a committee that is going to go through the applications and select from that group. As far as, as where we are in the process of how we're going to make that selection, we're, we are working through that. But we can definitely, Laura, inform the group once we do figure that out.
Yes, we're working, we're working through the, the components of equity in small businesses. As we know, we need an online application. However, not all small business owners are, are online application savvy. And so we've, we're arranging for assistant days at, we lost our library friends, hoping to arrange those at Lucero Library and heading over to Rawlings Library. So there are assistant days, and we want to announce this before we actually open it up so that we've talked about in what they did in Aurora, which they decided pros and cons to. They looked at some high- They looked at some high crime rates in the City of Aurora and they allocated more dollars to those businesses and then decided, um, I, I actually don't know where they ended up. Um, and we thought, well, we needed to have an equitable opportunity for first come, first served. So there will be a period of time before announcement and opening of that grant for question and answer and seeking resources and assistance, uh, to complete an application online and then sign the agreement electronically as well.
So, um, selecting the contractors hasn't been determined yet. What about if a, um, let's say you get, um, 400 applicants, you can select the 40 businesses that can have this service. Um, what, uh, what about, um, areas where, in the city where maybe crime is reported a little bit more, things like that? Are you looking to actually address, um, the areas that are affected most through this program? How do you decide where they go?
We, we're gonna tag team here. So the, your question about the contractors, we want to address for you. Um, so with Franklin Energy, uh, we have a program, it's called a Trade Ally Program, Management Program, where we vet contractors and they need to provide, uh, proof of insurance and tax information. And they're registered through Black Hills. Um, they're not preferred, but they're vetted. So those contractors, um, we will use over ones that are not in our trade ally program in the hopes that if they're not, uh, involved, we will sign them up. But that's our contractor list.
Okay. And what about where? Where the, where the businesses are going to be selected to have this service available? Are they going to be in higher crime areas? Who's choosing that and how does that work?
Uh, we can't, we can take the, the direction of, of council.
Okay, um.
And then also the cameras, um, uh, our IT department has created the specs with respect to cameras. You know, they work with Counselor, um, Atencio, uh, with one particular camera company. And now our IT department working with our police department. So as long as the handful of, uh, camera vendors, um, do, uh, meet the requirements for access by the police.
Okay. Um, and how are the businesses can be informed to apply? I see that you have a press conference on the 27th, then the program is going to start up, uh, accepting applications six days later. Um, aside from a press conference, maybe having it on the city's website, uh, how else are you gonna let businesses know? Like even on an equitable level, some of those folks who don't know about these programs are the folks that are being affected the most. Um, so how do you plan on tackling that?
So we just scheduled that. We just scheduled the, uh, press conference. Actually, it's for, uh, March 28th. And we're, uh, getting a venue for that now. But we will also do outreach via, um, the chambers and the neighborhood groups. Um, we're hoping you can help us, uh, reach out to your constituents in your, your various areas. Um, so we can get the word out about the program. And that's, that's actually why we're having the press conference, I believe it's on a Tuesday. And then we're not opening the application process until the following Monday. Because we know some people will see this on TV and those are going to be the first, first to apply. And we don't want all of the, the spots gone. And so that's why there's sort of that leg time for when the application process actually opens.
Okay, thank you. And, um, there was a similar, similar program, uh, happening, uh, uh, with this last year, that was similar to this last year, that the Public Department of Public Health and Environment had put together. And they had didn't done it for, they had done each house and they were doing private homes, um, with alleyways with, or small businesses in some of these, uh, it was the Superfund Site, uh, area where they were able to install solar lights and not lights that will charge people to use. Um, and they were able to do this program for about 2,000, if not less per home. Um, how are you able to compete with that? Like what, why, why shouldn't we use solar lights instead of lights that we have to turn on and off and pay for? And, um, requiring different, just different maintenance like that? Why would we use this program?
Solar lights, um, if the sun isn't shining and they're not receiving the light to charge.
We receive.
Not going to.
Yeah, but we have like well over 340 days of sunlight in Pueblo. So that's not necessarily the concern there. I think more of the concern is, um, the maintenance for this. And I just think that it costs for this, for only 40 businesses to be, um, helped out in, with the process that is very muddy and unclear. Um, for $10,000 per 40 business, that sounds like a lot of money. Uh, as to where we can buy a bunch of solar panel lights with, um, lights that come on when people are coming around the undesired areas. Um, I think that the 10,000 is just too much per business.
A couple of things, if I could, Counselor, uh, Martinez Ortega. Um, first off, on the, uh, the crime data, we can provide crime data to the board so that they can look at that and certainly include that in their decision-making process.
That's what the PDHPE also did with you all.
Um, as far as like the lighting, what I would say through my experience, having been trained in that, it's called SEPTED, the Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. There are a lot of times what, what ends up being a better light choice to, uh, reduce crime is, is not something that's going to be necessarily available in a solar powered model. Uh, it's types of lighting that's used and those lighting sources are oftentimes based on the type of bulb that is used. Um, and that kind of thing. The other thing to keep in mind is you're looking at the price comparison is the fact that we're talking about also installing cameras, which have a, have a higher cost than a, than a solar powered light. And they also help us, um, through, uh, being able to utilize that video, uh, to potentially, uh, i- if people are breaking into vehicles or, or whatever the crime might be that happens, uh, to be able to potentially pursue prosecution later.
Well, I still, um, I understand that the, um, the magnitude of how many, uh, looms come out of a light, um, can be affected on the power behind it. But, um, we live in the light, we live in the world of LEDs. Um, any light, any area can be illuminated to full sunlight with a solar panel. So I don't necessarily buy that we have to go through the power grid to fund this program. Um, but then also, still even a, um, camera system and solar panels and installation is still less than $10,000. I still don't understand that.
Counselor, um, it is up to, it is, uh, up to 10,000 was the award. Um, and I'm, and following from, um, the, uh, City of Aurora's recommendation, the average in, in Aurora, costs may be different with contractors, is 15.
Counselor Flores.
Um, I, I just wanted to comment that I, I don't think the price is exorbitant here. Uh, but it reminds me, uh, of the acceptance of grants that we do a lot of. What we're doing here is accepting a grant, uh, and, and gratitude really to Black Hills. It, the cost is not going to be 10,000, uh, for our match. Uh, we're really accepting 200,000 on behalf of whatever businesses we can affect. And I, I think we need to be appreciative of that portion. But I, I see so many differences with a business building. I could imagine that, uh, if you had an accountant, uh, that had a, uh, you know, a, out, I don't know, a thousand square foot building and has a s- somebody to help him, that the cost would be much less than if you had, uh, you know, a warehouse or you had a storage building or, uh, where you had a lot of nooks and crannies. So I don't think the price is because it's exorbitant. And I think you're probably going to find some businesses that the cost is going to be much more. Uh, but I'm, I, I'm appreciative that Black Hills has come stepping forward and you guys created this idea because half the cost is going to be borne by you. And this, this is also a demonstration project. I mean, if this really works, uh, and, and you know, we, we all are concerned about shoplifting. Uh, the only thing I would be concerned about is that the cameras are able to capture, uh, you know, a, uh, face recognition. Uh, so you need a much better camera to be able to, uh, to do that. Cause I see a lot of stuff on TV, you cannot tell who it is most of the time. And shoplifters, for whatever reason, they don't go in to a, a store to shoplift with, with, uh, all kinds of masks or, you know, most of them are just out there wanting you to think that, uh, you know, before they dash out of the store. So a lot of times those pictures can be captured. And if I could just address that, uh, Lori Pins, the, uh, IT Director, has come up with a list of requirements, not so much on what vendor, but what the cameras need to be able to do. Some of those requirements include, uh, the ability to be web-based. Um, so they, in the future, if we, if we do move forward with a, a real-time crime center, we would be able to access those cameras. Um, and also, uh, I think there's some issues related to the quality of the video, uh, that are addressed in those, those requirements. Now, I don't know that we've required facial, uh, recognition. That's kind of a touchy subject, uh, to be, to be honest with you in the public sphere right now on whether cities and police departments in particular should engage in facial recognition software. But there are some abilities that a lot of those cameras will have that, say, for example, we could try to search for a white Toyota Corolla. And it can help us find where a white Toyota Corolla may have entered into those, into those frames. So yeah, they would have a huge impact in our ability to, to, to fight crime.
Thanks. Um, Ms. Solano, can you, do you know how much money we have left from the $300,000 grant that wasn't, um, given to all the small businesses? Was there a significant amount left?
I think, I believe, you know, and then I, I've cautioned you and I before, whenever I have to guess, 469,000 was the amount from PEDCO.
No, no, no. The, um, the small business grants we just did.
Oh, we have, um, um, received a reply back from 80 and probably not used, but maybe 82,000. It's about 82,000 of the 297,000.
Would there be, um, some way, if the council was willing, that we could donate the additional money to the project as well? Since it's all for helping small businesses?
Thank you.
There, there, as you know, there are two pots of ARPA money. There's lost revenue, government services, and then there's what I call basic ARPA. The grants to small businesses, um, came out of the basic ARPA, which meant that the grants had to go to businesses located in qualified census tracts. So yeah, the answer is yes, as long as they're within qualified census tracts. I think most city attorneys would prefer in this project with the cameras and the lights to come out of, um, revenue replacement, lost revenue, government services. I think it also qualifies under basic ARPA, but the funds would be restricted to businesses located in qualified census tracts.
Um, yeah. So what I'm asking is for the remainder, can we use those for just census tract businesses? If that's the route we decide to go.
That is correct. You can.
So I would like to find out what that, how much did you say was left, Ms. Solano? Or Alex, I don't know if you know exactly, a roundabout number. So we have 100 and.
Just shorted, just, we had 267, 297 up too. So we're just over again.
So an additional 200,000. So I'd like to see that additional 200,000 go into this program um, to help businesses that are in the census tract. So that would be an additional 20 businesses to the census tract.
It would be a total of then 600,000.
Yeah.
The Black Hills Energy contribution to Crime Stoppers and from the city, then it would be 400,000.
Uh, yeah, I mean, we've already decided on the council that we wanted that money to go to small business in some, in some facts. So this would just be another way to help them.
I'm, uh, I want to clarify because Black Hills said that cameras were not going to be included in this program. But then I think that we keep saying that cameras are included. Is that, can that be clarified?
Cameras are included.
Cameras will be.
Absolutely. And then also I just want to add that if a project only, um, you know, the sum of it is only $2,000 or $3,000, then that would enable us to put that money back into the pot and fund another one. You know, we're not going to say that each project is $10,000 or each individually reviewed.
That's great. Thank you for letting us know. And, uh, if this does go through, I'd love to see a report out on some of the, some of the outcomes of this. Thanks.
Counselor Mastry.
So we have about $200,000 left in the census tract area, correct? So are we able to divide that for businesses only for the census tract as one of the criteria? And then the other just have to meet the other criteria, like 200,000 towards, out of the lost revenue? Okay. Yeah, because we, that would just be. And then on your contractors, are you doing RFPs in your due diligence to secure a, uh, contractor?
So the, the vendor Franklin Energy who does the assessments and the audits for us is a, basically a certified contractor for Black Hills. They've been doing it for years. They manage these trade allies who are local contractors, who as I explained are vetted and have insurance and, um.
Yeah, but are they all the, you know, I mean, you want to put it up to see who's the best pricing, right? I mean, not just, not just whether they have the ability to have their insurance and so forth, but who offers the best pricing?
Correct.
Yeah. So would they be doing that too?
Absolutely. Franklin Energy does that for us. Yeah.
Okay. And you'll be choosing the most cost-effective.
Correct. Yes.
You know, um, it, this is a, you know, a good deterrent. But what we would like to see is for people to be held accountable for their thefts. I mean, because we have cameras, but that doesn't necessarily mean we can prosecute.
Number four. I have the exact number is 207,900. And so the 80, uh, 82,500 are those businesses that have reached out. Not all of them have completed all the SAM registration requirements. So that figure might go up if they do not complete that. But that is how much we know at this point that could be real.
Okay. Counselor Flores.
Uh, during, uh, Doreen, you sound like you've already set up the process. And I guess the question is, uh, this additional money that we want to give you, if everybody agrees, uh, would have to be carved out separately to make sure that that money is used for the qualified zones that the ARPA money identifies. Is that, I, I guess I just need a yes or no as to whether that's going to be, uh, a, a problem. And by the way, you probably were going to hit a lot of, of, of businesses that are in the qualified zone too. So it'll make it simple, but.
Yes, that, that is something that we can, we can do as long as we know what parameters we need to work with and what money, the exact dollar amount, we can make sure to separate that out into a different account that just comes strictly out of, out of that bucket of money for who needs to, um, get that.
Accounting standpoint, we probably need to identify the two areas separately.
So you would just need us to provide an accounting tracking of that?
Yeah.
We can do that.
Is there any qualified census tract and then non-qualified census tract?
Yeah.
But that doesn't, that doesn't mean that you're, you're going to be satisfied with just that amount going to here. If you see that the need is more in that area, I mean, you can use the other pot of money, I guess.
I know that Black Hills, um, sends emails out, you know, for our bills for our businesses. Is there a way to send out a notice that this will be going on attached to the email bill or does that?
We can send, we can send that, um, via our email address, addresses that we have. That's not a problem. Um, and actually I believe that was one of the things on our list. The bill inserts, those are hard to come by only because, um, there are regulatory and energy efficiency. There's, there's messaging that we have to actually, that we're required to do by the PUC. So those are hard to come by. We, I'm actually, I will actually go back and check and see if we can do one of those. Um, but I think as quickly as this program is starting, we may not be able to, yeah.
I think even the, the email is.
But in emails, that's an easy thing.
Okay. Great. Ms. Solano?
And, and if you feel, if council feels like we're, we're rushing and we felt that way as well. We postponed the work session, you know, one week. We can always move back, um, the start grant opening date from the 3rd into the 10th and, um, share with you electronically the application itself, the restrictions on who can and cannot apply. Um, and, and make sure that, um, you know, we. um, and, and make sure that, um, you know, we're, we're fully covered in that communication. Um, and that might be the best thing to do, is just move it to the grant application opening date to the, to the 10th of April.
One other thing I'd, I'd like to ask, because I noticed that when I visit a lot of businesses, the doors are locked and somebody, you got to knock or ring a bell, and then somebody gets up to answer it. Is that part of a security thing, option that they're going to be offering to where they can just un, you know, hit the buzzer and the door unlocks and somebody could come in, or?
I, I...
It's, but you know, like when you have the small insurance companies and they have their ladies there during the day, dentist office, um, a lot of smaller businesses I've seen where the door's locked.
Yeah, I don't know if that was one of the options that we're, we were looking at. My understanding is we were looking at lighting and cameras as, as being the, uh, the primary focus of the, of the program. You know, whether somebody wants to change that and add something, I, I don't know, but I think right now, as the program is, is being brought forward, it's to focus on lighting and cameras. Now, where we might be able to, to, to be of help is when we do that SEP Ted survey, um, offering ideas on how to, how to address that issue, uh, through that. But I don't know that the, you know, if, if it's a buzzer that lets people in, I don't think that that would be fiscally covered under the program as is currently envisioned.
It'd be nice to check it out, because like I said, there's a lot of businesses, they have to come and open it, oh, get up from their desk and open the door. It's the security, safety, it's all about safety. So maybe it's a possibility if you could check that out.
Yes, one last question, just one.
One last question slash comment. Um, can we make the requirement for some of this outdoor lighting, um, be uh, energy efficient? That would have to be a requirement. Uh, is that a possibility? Great.
Your energy efficiency lady here.
You know, and I would just like to, as, as the chief, uh, thank Black Hills and Crime Stoppers for stepping up and, and trying to help us problem solve solutions to, to make our community safer. It's a true team effort. And, uh, we can't do it by ourselves. And to know that we have, uh, uh, partners in the community like Black Hills and, and Public Crime Stoppers i- is really important, uh, for us to see and to know that we can work together to, to find solutions. So thank you.
And I want to echo that. Um, I, I attended those small business meetings, and there hasn't been one solution brought forward since then. And so, thank you for putting your heads together and coming up with this idea. I know it's not going to help every business, but it will help some businesses that truly need it. And cameras are very expensive. I know I have three restaurants. Um, lighting's expensive. Um, and so, thank you, Black Hills, for, um, you know, pulling your budget together to, to, to put this together. And so do you need direction on when we want to see this, or?
Just direction to move forward, and then we'll work with the, uh, the city attorney to see if it can be on, uh, March 27th. Um, it's not that, next week is the 13th, so file for the end of the month. Um, ordinances, and the ordinance will be a sub-recipient agreement to, uh, Crime Stoppers at Pueblo. And God bless Crystal, she's about to do all of the work at Crime Stoppers at Pueblo.
Uh, Mr. Atencio, do you have any questions or comments for Black Hills?
Just something real quick. If you remember, I brought, uh, a program like this, and, uh, a lot of the businesses, uh, on the East Forest Street corridor wanted to see cameras. So I'm sure they're going to want this wholeheartedly and able to apply.
Okay. Well, we, uh, we look forward to seeing this on our agenda, and thank you very much.
Thanks for your support.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next up, we have the home ARP allocation plan, Mr. Gallagher.
Good evening, President Graham, members of council. Uh, thank you for having me, and belated birthday to the Chief of Staff, Laura. Sorry, I'm going to get my act together here. I was so intently listening to the Black Hills presentation, I kind of lost my speech and train of thought. I almost said Daryl. Clyde. I am here today to discuss the, uh, home ARP allocation plan. Last year, uh, city council, uh, accepted on behalf of the Pueblo Consortium, City and County Partnership, the home ARP, um, grant offered. And that, that grant, funding for that grant came out of the ARPA funds, $5 billion was sent to the country uh, to refund supplementary funds to the Home Investment Partnership Fund. The city and the county received $3,090,925. And, uh, to participate with the grant, um, city had to follow, the city and county had to follow a prescriptive, uh, outreach plan to ensure that we were, um, getting input from and addressing the needs of the four qualifying populations that are included in the grant. Their list on your screen, they break down quickly as homeless individuals, people at risk of homelessness, and that's generally considered a 30% or less AMI benefit. Persons fleeing domestic violence or human trafficking. And then an other catch-all population where people would be prevented from becoming homeless with, uh, use of services that could be provided. The, uh, um, definitions under this program for homelessness are listed here, and, and basically, it's, uh, individuals without a permanent residence or a residence fit for sleeping. Um, there's also, uh, definitions for what at risk of homelessness is. And that breaks down to people who are moving multiple times in the year, because they have unstable housing, doubled up, uh, they're living in motels or hotels. Overcrowding is kind of, um, a double of the doubling up. Uh, SROs are listed here, but SROs are also eligible under the program. So that one says the double, doubled up. And then individuals exiting institutions. So if you're uh, being released from prison, you might not have place to stay, and you could be at risk of homelessness. Um, the grant has a couple eligible activities that we are under, able to undertake in this, this, uh, program. Production of affordable housing through new construction or rehab, tenant-based rental assistance. Um, the supportive s- services listed in the middle bullet here, that's, that's a little different than the public services you're used to seeing come, come across your desk. These are client-based services, so they're only available to people participating in the program and not open to the public. Similarly to maybe the way insurance works, paying your doctor bill. Um, purchase and development of non-congregate shelter and, uh, expanding operating capacity to handle some of the supportive services for projects undertaken. Part of the, the main part of developing the allocation plan was, uh, through the public outreach to determine what the needs are in the community. And the city and the county held, um, one public meeting. Second one is scheduled for March 10th, Friday. And we held eight stakeholder sections along the way with various, um, sectors and agencies to, to hit a gambit of, of everything in the city. We dealt with civil rights, fair housing, people, um, whose English is a second language, um, veterans, uh, that, um, domestic violence, human trafficking, other issues. And encompassing all of those, uh, suggestions that we received, the under, over, overwhelming, um, thing that came up was that we are short, and we, we knew this, but we are short one-bedroom units for individuals who make less than 30% AMI. They're currently working on a six-month wait period for individuals in this category. Years, a few years ago, it was just two weeks. Now it's a six months because the capacity of housing has just diminished. Um, we currently have 440 housing vouchers that are not being used because they cannot find a unit, or they cannot find a unit that the voucher will pay for. The vouchers by waiver from the Housing Authority have been expanded by to 120%, but they're still lower than what the rates are. So effectively, um, supply and demand, the, uh, rents have gone up because the vacancy is so, so low. To be uh, an effective real estate market, we should be looking, uh, at the 7% or so, uh, vacancy rate. And, and we're, we need to do that about three or four times over before we get there. So meeting the needs of, uh, of the community as addressed, the, the home allocation plan breaks down as follows. The planning administration is set, uh, at the 15% limit per the grant. Uh, the city will have to manage these projects for the next 15 years, so, um, dividing that 30,000 a year. The, uh, uh, the, the grant is received through the consortium, uh, and the consortium percentages between the city and county are set at 268 to 40, and it's an 87-13 split. The, uh, over, overall need for the community is to expand the, the capacity of housing. So we put the bulk of the financing at $2 million in that category. Now, there's two categories within construction of rental housing. One is operations and the other is construction. And we've really broken that down into 1.5 million uh, in construction costs and 500,000 in operations. Uh, individuals who are homeless may not be able to pay the rent. So operations cover the lack of rent. If a person has a voucher, the property can accept the voucher and operations will not be built, but it's, it's effectively enough to cover half of the, uh, operations over a 15-year period of time. So, um, construction rental housing at 2 million, client services, what was suggested, that was needed, is wraparound services when you're dealing with hard-to-house individuals and potentially, um, eviction prevention. Now, the programs haven't been decided, but that's what was the main, um, outcry from the community. So, uh, basically, the balance of the grant was put into, uh, client services at 472,721. And we need to adopt, uh, this by ordinance, which will be coming your way, under an, an amendment to our 2021 annual action plan. The grant was, Grant Funds of ARPA was created in 2021, so it's attached to that grant here. But to adopt this allocation plan, we will do it formally through an amendment to the annual action plan. And, uh, that concludes this, this presentation. If you have any questions for me?
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Gallagher and Mr. Forrest?
Uh, the, uh, 2 million for construction, uh, what are you anticipating as the amount of units that, uh, that would, we'd be able to build?
Now, that, that can be a kind of bearing. We'll put out a request for proposal for developers to come, just throwing this out there, say a permanent, a permanent supportive housing project, like, uh, the right place was done. Um, if, if we just decided to go, go build tomorrow, and we didn't bring any partners, and we just did it, um, that could be so small as six units with operating for the next 15 years. Or if we combine with grants available through the state and, um, other partners, it can grow there. So on a smaller scale, I would anticipate six units constructed, and that's $250,000 a unit. And that's probably um, conservative in, in construction. An average house costs about 350 now, so... But again, it's just a, a guess from this chair. I would anticipate six units. It's a small side.
And, and the client services, uh, that would be contracted out to some nonprofit that's going to, uh, I guess, provide education so that people that have chronic homelessness potentially could...
It, it may, um, it may be, uh, actually contracted out to a medical service provider, depending upon what services they are. Uh, but it could be a nonprofit if the, uh, particular wraparound services needed were in their wheelhouse with the right place. The, um, Health Solutions is the wraparound service provider, and they're more medical than they are nonprofit. So if we just veered that, um, it may be outside of nonprofit, or it could be within inside nonprofit. What I did, skip over two items on the, uh, on the last slide, Clyde, if we could. I stopped too soon. Sorry. On the last slide is, um, 154,005% of the grant for nonprofit, um, administration, should they be managing, whoever is managing those client services. Um, over the years, um, they're going to need administrative to run those programs. And the, uh, committee steering the outreach suggested that we provide a preference to chronic homelessness over individuals who are simply homeless. So chronic homelessness would be those who have been homeless the longest or more frequently, in and out of housing throughout a year, and they're the hardest to house, um, population.
In my, in my head, I almost imagine...
All right, let's run you through it too fast.
I'm imagining a facility that would look a lot like a nursing home to me, where you have a central administration, and then you have the services right there, uh, with the chronic homelessness with a bedroom and a central eating place. And you could, you could probably service a lot more people that way. Not that it would be a nursing home, you could call it whatever you want to call it, but...
And under the home program, in its originality, original form, home was required to build your home. And so whatever it looks like in the end, it has to be, uh, a unit that you lease. And, and in assisted living, where you have a bedroom that might not exactly be, um, in leased territory. It could be. But, um, you know, the cor- the, uh, correction facility that, uh, was converted by Christ Life Ministry off of Lake Avenue, that, that building, and, and that's a little bit more than 2 million, but that is certainly, um, what you were describing, and it would be work, working well.
Counselor Mastry, did you have something?
So the recipients would be really receiving subsidized housing, is, is that correct? I mean, vouchers and so forth, they'd be qualified, it'd be income-qualified in order to res- to be a tenant for one of the, this program?
This grant works a little different than all the other grants that we administer, and this one is a status-based grant versus an income-based grant. So if you are homeless, that there qualifies you. Obviously, you're, you have lower amount of income, but um, it's more of a status base. You are homeless, therefore you qualify. Or if you are a victim of domestic violence, um, maybe you aren't low-income, but you need to shelter, you need to escape in some fashion.
So you couldn't run it with, um, the Housing Authority?
You can, um, you can, it does allow for it to be, uh, a mixed. Uh, you can not, um, separate, if, if you're going to have, um, incomes on, uh, units on an income basis, you have to have units on a status basis. Or you can just have status-based units.
Because my thoughts behind it are, you know, Housing Authority program already exists. And why not utilize as much money as you can towards more housing, rather than to pay all these junk fees to create a whole nother system? You know, you know, I mean, that's what we got the grant for, was to provide housing for homeless people. And so I think if it could be more cost-effective to run it through an authority that already exists, why wouldn't we do that? Because we want to house people. We don't want to spend money on junk fees through administrations and all these other fees that you've got here and have to pay out. That's 1.1 million. That's a third of the grant going towards things like that, where Housing Authority would be able to you, um, move it forward further, right? They'd have to acquire another property, or?
What, what did you incorporate in junk fees?
Well, anything that's outside the cost of... Well, anything that's outside the cost of prov- of of the construction of the rental housing.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, if we have an authority already in place, we don't need to create these other, these other entities. They would just facilitate it. Or am I wrong?
No, no, you're not, you're not wrong. You're not wrong. You're just one step ahead of the process. The Housing Authority is an eligible developer. We would have to put out an RFP, and they magically may have the best best proposal, cheapest cost, and and we would go that way. There's still uh separate of construction is is client services. Now, the individuals are coming from a a fairly bad place in life, and what is helpful is the wraparound services. So whether that's administered by a healthcare provider, the Housing Authority, the developer, if it's not the Housing Authority, um, that kind of remains to be seen, but we have at least carved out four hundred and seventy for uh wraparound services to assist the residents to remain ho- housed. Um, some of the issues.
Like the um, what was it? The grant that we gave last week for people to understand their finances and how to work with their finances and the all the hous- all the five oh one Cs that we support now for homelessness and mental health, and they're already there, right? Because we've already been giving them money.
Right, correct.
Because I'd like to see as much money go to provide more housing for people that are suffering from homelessness.
And I think you're right on that. What we've found um was that the capacity is or the lack of capacity is the real issue behind it all. But in order to make this successful, we we shouldn't um eliminate the need of of the client services. Now, there's a difference in um public services that are funded outside of the the community for a soup kitchen, for wha- whatever. These are client uh services. So only those tenants, um, they may have some unmet needs, and if they are already met, we we wouldn't use them. We could, after a late, a later date, if we determine that uh client services aren't as needed as anticipated, we can amend the plan to to move that into housing dollars. But I I think to remain successful, we should uh prepare for all batting um events.
Councilor Flores?
When you applied for this grant or this money, uh, the federal government just doesn't give you money and say, you do, you can do it. I mean, there there's rules here that we have to follow. Uh, the Housing Authority, as an example, doesn't pro- provide client services. Uh, they just provide housing. Uh, they're, they may contract it out. Maybe they've got some, you know, stuff that they contract out. But I guess the question, and and I I'm just following up on on Councilman Maestri's questions because I think they're pertinent. They're, they're really trying to change their lifestyle. Uh, that's really the the basis of this in in hoping that these chronic homeless people are going to be able to stand up on their own two feet and be able to manage their life, I guess, through the ownership of a house or whatever. And uh, what's interesting, though, is how how long of a commitment is there? Four hundred and twenty thousand sounds like a lot of money. But if there's a commitment there for twenty years or ten years or whatever, I don't think it's enough. I I I'm, it's very interesting. I mean, if it uh uh, at some point, that would be exhausted. And so would the nonprofit numbers would also be exhausted at some point in time. How long do they expect you to keep this program going like that?
This is a fifteen-year budget. And the uh operations was budgeted at fifty percent of what is expected. Uh, so as individuals come into the housing that's constructed, some of those individuals may receive a housing voucher. And then, so that would go, that that would have been spent for that is reserved for the next person who didn't have a voucher. So we've budgeted fifty percent of what's required, but we anticipate vouchers coming in, and so it should should do that. And you mentioned they don't, they won't let us do whatever we we want on this, and the planning percentage of one hundred and fifty-four thousand is uh the part of the requirements of the meeting requirements of the grant. They are requiring that we write separate policies for every every component aspect that we do down this this road. Um, so if we were to use a client-based service, um, and if we were to use three client-based services, we'd have to write policies and procedures, intake waiting lists for each one. Um, so it it can um be more expensive to uh administer a more complex uh project. And the city is responsible for monitoring and uh ensuring that the units are used properly for the next fifteen years. So the the three oh nine split between the county and the city will go towards the design, management, implementation, and operations for the balance of the year or balance of the fifteen years.
Mr. Atencio, do you have any questions?
No, I kind of have to agree with Councilor Maestri in that one-third of the uh the money goes to basically administration and one, two-thirds of it going towards housing. But of course, there aren't any uh developers out there that they're doing this kind of housing. Uh, Posada was gonna do that uh development over on on the uh south side that uh I talked about that hundred and thirty-two unit apartment complex that's gonna be doing uh built by uh Dog Patch. They could probably uh uh do some of this because they're gonna do some uh voucher housing there. So it's, some of that is going to uh include low-income housing, but uh you literally have to uh, unless one of those developers come and uh ask for some of this money and then include more housing in their developments, that might be the answer, too.
Uh, Councilor, we have fifteen percent of the grant allocated to administration. Um, the other fifteen percent, fifteen point three is in client services. And if you would, if you think that it should be in housing construction, um, I'll take that back. Uh, we are in the public comment process. We're having a public meeting and uh on Friday. And for those um in attendance, we can ask their opinion on that and revise this if that is your your discretion. We have to coordinate with county. Uh, the county commissioners will be reviewing this as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gallagher. If there's any other questions.
Are, would you like the allocation revised, or are we moving forward?
I'd like to see it revised. I mean, the common per- that the regular person can do the math in this community. And, you know, that's what we hear from our constituents is that we would like, we we see a lot of funds, a lot of grants come in place, and a lot of it goes towards administration. I mean, Catholic charity sat here and in front of us and told us, basically, they take up seventy percent of their six million dollars every year. So.
Regardless of who the grant goes to, though, there'll still be that s- fifteen percent or ten percent or whatever it is, administration costs. It's kind of what we learned from Posada coming and talking about the apartment complexes that we just helped with. We still had to pay them. What's the, what's the going rate of?
Well, you're cutting my budget. It, so if you want um to remove the fifteen percent from the grant, then the City General Fund will have to pick that up as we move forward. That's um.
It's a ten-year program. Ten-year program.
A fifteen-year program.
Fifteen-year program. We can come up with the other fifteen percent somewhere around fifteen years.
I I just wanted to say, I'm not prepared to change anything you've done. You you are in the middle of a process here that really hasn't been completed yet, as I understand. You still have another public hearing. You've got some other things in place. So we've had a lot of people already contribute to this preliminary budget, right?
We have had a lot of contribution.
And you've had one public hearing.
One to go.
Yeah, I I think we did.
How many attended your public hearing?
Um, I had six attend the first public hearing. We had over fifty attend stakeholder sessions. And we'll see on our last public hearing.
And describe stakeholder sessions.
Stakeholder sessions were subject, uh, they were all hybrid. The public meeting was in this um in this room uh via hybrid as well. And uh, the the subject stakeholder sessions were for just veterans, and so only veteran agencies were um invited, and they told us everything that they're um seeing. We had one for domestic violence and one for human trafficking. Um, Rape Crisis Center handles um human trafficking uh with assistance to the police department. And there are very few um agencies. So that was really a one-on-one. Uh, and they reported what they've seen over the years. Um, and we had uh a homeless shelter uh service provider meeting. We've I'm losing track of which ones we had uh over uh over the eight, but um we had a general, and um I can find my notes here.
Would it be sufficient for Mr. Gallagher to come back after the next um public meeting and report to us again if there's been any changes, and then we'll go from there?
Yes, thank you. And and for clarification, um, uh, Councilor Flores, this was not a grant that the city applied for. This is um part of the home grant coming to the city that the Fed's um allocation to Pueblo was this amount of money. And it required him first, the first thing that Brian had to do out of the um Housing Department was to commission this uh study. And um, so this, this is the result of that first um commission.
And you'll have the uh home allocation plan in your packets for next council go-around.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gallagher.
Um, we do have a time as of the essence scenario. We have to submit this to HUD on by the thirty-first of March. So if we did if we did want another work session, we'd have to do it um on the thirteenth.
Is your uh public meeting before that?
On the tenth.
It's on the what?
On the tenth.
On the tenth. So can we get them scheduled for the thirteenth for just a quick follow-up on how that meeting went?
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Next, the okay, next up, we have uh the beautification project update with uh Stephen Meyer, Bill Zwick, and Rebecca Knapp.
Madam President, as they're coming to the podium and as um uh Stephen Meyer is um, he's like Larry attending um from home this evening. I just wanted to do a quick background of, they've done all of the great work, but last um fall in conversation about the twenty twenty-three budget, um, Counselor Atencio had spoke about um adding a certain amount for uh city beautification. And the first ordinance was last week, and I think second reading was the seventy-five thousand dollars for trees, please. And this is a follow-up to a a community stakeholder group that um I'll val- and now I'll hand it over and they'll take it from there. Uh, Stephen facilitated it out of um Parks and Rec.
I'll start us off. Um, yeah, we got together uh um from directions from the mayor's office to come up with a list of projects that uh would beautify the city of Pueblo um and key locations throughout the community uh like streetscape landscaping. And so uh we were encouraged to um get together with Streetscape Committee as well as Keep Pueblo Beautiful. And we did that, and and from that came up this list uh that Bill's gonna start off and present to you with Rebecca.
Are we on? All right. Bill Zwick, um uh, company owner, uh professional landscape architect. To my right here is Rebecca Knapp. She's also a professional landscape architect, has her own business. I'm representing um Keep Pueblo Beautiful. I'm now president of Keep Pueblo Beautiful. Um, and also on the Streetscape Advisory Committee. I volunteered to continue with that since I was involved with that. Rebecca is also on the Streetscape Advisory Committee. Um, I'd like to go over a couple of things with beautification. Just because I want you to know, it's not just plant planting flowers. It's not just pretty little things that we have to maintain. Um, there's a purpose for these, this beautification projects in any community. Uh, and Pueblo's done a good job over the last twelve years. Uh, purpose of of beautification is the image of the community. Um, it really is how visitors see us. And it's part of a quality of life. Um, high visibility areas should be uh exposed and quantified, so not necessarily spending money on areas that you can't, the visitor can't see or somebody else or a large uh numbers of people. Keep in mind, these projects have to be in the public right-of-way or on city-owned land. Uh, they need to be sustainable, meaning water-wise, uh, maintainable and longevity, so that it's not put in, and then we have to replace them all of a sudden. Stephen mentioned streetscape and landscaping. That includes hardscapes uh such as streetscapes on Union Avenue, trees and plantings and water-wise plantings. Um, the first slide, is that me over here? Um, I'm gonna leave this up. It's not a real good clear uh image, but also that's why we handed these out, so that you can go back and forth from this map to the list of projects. There's about sixteen projects. Um, in this map, the red color is uh city parks, the green are renovation projects that are on this list, and the pink are new projects on this list. So if we can, we'll just keep this up. I'll go to this next slide just to show everyone what we're looking at here. Um, this is uh, like I said, fifteen projects, and I'll go through these and flip back here to the map. These first projects are new sites. I twenty-five and City Center is actually a project that I've always had. City Council asked me to do something with, and I've always said, this is how much it's gonna cost, and I never got the money for it. So that's on the list. Uh, city, then this is half of that interchange. CDOT is constructed, the other half, and is maintaining that. Number two is US fifty bypass. This is Hudson uh and Bonford to La Crosse. This is maintained right now by our city streets department. They mow the lawn, although it is on city or CDOT right-of-way. This would have trees, pretty simple uh streetscape, parkway kind of thing. Um, number three, Troy Avenue is a median project, approximately one mile long. You can see the dollar amounts as we go along here. Twenty-four Street, Pueblo Boulevard, uh, north and southeast intersection. This has always been kind of a uh uh, well, this is an up-and-coming project, so we have some things happening on the west side of Pueblo Boulevard and also on the possibly on the east side. So this is an up-and-coming project. Thatcher, let me see if I can work. Yeah, Thatcher and State Highway ninety-six, uh, Pueblo Boulevard. This area has been identified by Keep Pueblo Beautiful and also Streetscapes as a potential project for years. It's a highly visible visitor intersection for people going to the reservoir. Uh, the the community goes by the high-volume count, so that would be a great area to to beautify right now. We have chain-link fence and gravel and some weeds and some signs for the pu- city parks. Sorry, Steve. Thatcher and I think I got that one. Oh, Thatcher on Highway ninety-six. And Vida, this area was recently um constructed by CDOT. There's an area there. Lincoln and Forest Street median from the bridge over to Champa, uh, new curb and gutter in the stamped concrete. This area was kind of overlooked by CDOT when they did the bridge, and also overlooked by CDOT when they did the intersection of Abriando and uh Lincoln. Washington and Abriando, landscape and screen buffer. This was identified uh along with um entries into neighborhoods. So this is entry off the interstate. Right now, uh, when you get to the parkway, Abriando Parkway, that's nice and green and has trees and well-maintained. But before that, as you enter, you see weeds, you see um rickety fences and things like that. So just think about images as you come off the interstate or you visit the community. McClellan and Abriando, this area is in into the uh Bessemer area, Lake Avenue. McClellan and Abriando, this area is in, into the, uh, Bessemer area, Lake Avenue and Ohio, Iowa Avenue to Pueblo Boulevard. This stretch, um, has been somewhat designed, uh, through the Urban Renewal Authority, but it had not been funded totally. So this is what's left over. At this point, I'll let Rebecca do something.
And then we have the second, um, category, which is renovations to existing sites. Um, a lot of these sites are ones where we installed them back in the eighties or the nineties. We've lost plant material due to vandalism or car accidents. Um, same thing with irrigation. We've lost irrigation, which means we've then lost plants. Um, sometimes again due to vandalism, um, and also sometimes it just was never there. And so going down that list, we have number eleven, which is Main Street, um, City Center to Eighth Street. Um, in there, we've got a lot of like old juniper areas. We just need to freshen that up and, um, and renovate. Number twelve is Santa Fe Avenue, City Center to Fourth Street. That's three blocks long. Um, that is over near the Arts Center. And we've had severed irrigation there. And so there's just no way to keep plant material alive. Uh, we also need to increase the tree planting beds along there so that the trees have a, have a chance of survival.
Some of these, if I may, these are our front door to our community. So there's a big arts and conference center, there's a convention center, those things that people go to from out of town. Um, this was done in nineteen ninety. I actually did the original design. It's been recently upgraded. CDOT came in and did the corners, but none of the irrigation works. So it is either, uh, truck-watered or not-watered at all. Um, so that's some things that we need to think about.
Just not sustainable and it's a welcome map, so it needs to look good. Uh, number thirteen is Abriando Parkway. Um, we're looking at doing some tree planting along there with Trees Please. Um, we're also looking at doing some maintenance to the trees along there. Uh, fourteen is Northern Avenue, Orman to Elm. We have landscape and irrigation with an option to completely redo it at, um, two million. That was once again done in the nineties. We need all new trees, new irrigation. Uh, we need to remove some trees. Was it particular pairs along there we were thinking?
Yeah, the corner planters in that area and we've been trying to plant flowers for various past, like, uh, Ray Aguilar. Um, but we don't have any dirt in those planters because they're full of tree roots and the irrigation is no longer there. So there's a lot of these areas that, um, it's just really pitiful that we can keep those things alive right now. So we really need to look at those if that's an area that you guys wanna choose to renovate, uh, beautify.
And number fifteen is Pueblo Boulevard, east side from Thatcher to Northern Avenue. Once again, irrigation and trees. Number sixteen is portion to keep everything sustainable, namely getting a full-time gardener position to help maintain this added landscape that we're looking to do.
So the Streetscape Advisory Committee, uh, formed in, uh, two thousand and seven, um, really hit home on this. So any new project, any new resident renovation, restoration of landscape had to have money, uh, to pay for the maintenance of it. Um, so we had a budget about two hundred and forty-three thousand to contract out the labor to do at least twenty-six different projects that were built with certain tax money. Um, but in this case now we my time up?
Right.
That's the first time I heard of that. That's the first time I heard of that all night long. That's pretty good. Okay. So, um, what we're looking at is with any one million dollar of projects, one person needs to be hired. It seems pretty, uh, I don't wanna say pitiful, but we need to maintain and be responsible for what we're putting citizens' money into and that image for a community and you know all that stuff, so.
It's an investment and we want it to be sustainable. And if we put stuff in and it gets vandalized, the next week it's gone. So we need staff to, uh, to be able to take care of that.
And that's our presentation.
You guys, um, any questions from the council?
Let me chime in here.
Okay.
May I?
You may, sir.
Okay, hey, um, uh, it's since I brought this up last fall and the reason is all the reasons that Bill gave, uh, beautifying our city, making it a lot better image, the whole thing. Uh, I didn't find it hard to ask for a million dollars of, uh, beautification money for twenty twenty-three. And, uh, I like the list. Problem is that the list is really long and it's really big in terms of money. But, uh, I'm going to throw out right off the top of my head. The, uh, I wanna add one more, by the way, Bill, and that's, uh, the intersection of, uh, Troy and Highway forty-seven. That intersection going up into the university, we have people from all over the country coming in, uh, to the university daily, literally, and that intersection, we really should beautify that one. So I'm gonna add that one to the list, but my list, if, if I had the choice, I would do number two, number five, number seven, number nine, number twelve, number fifteen and number sixteen. So if, if we could, uh, that, that puts one project in every quadrant of the city and I think it would do a lot to help out. So that's my ask. If, if the other counselors would, uh, uh, help out, we could get a lot of things done this year.
Did you already add it up? What's the total?
Oh, I didn't add them up, but they're just over a million dollars. I think this number sixteen took it over a million. But we do need somebody, somebody in there to, to, uh, uh, make this sustainable. We, we can't, uh, the argument is that we always put projects together, but we never maintain them. And, uh, that's one of the things that we really do have to do. We need somebody full-time that's going to, uh, maintain our projects like this.
Ms. Lana, did you have something?
It was one million, one hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Oh, sure.
Number thirteen, which is, um, on council's docket, uh, for second reading. Uh, that's, this is the Trees Please in, in process right now. Um, so this is the first seventy-five thousand ordinance, um, stemming from last fall's discussion of beautification.
Is this something that can just be taken out of the general fund budget?
Yes.
It would have to be. Uh, would you like a matrix sent out to, um, to counselors to to ask for response from everyone or? Next steps.
I, I'm, I'm good with this. I think it's needed and I think taxpayers would be pleased to see that the city is spending their tax dollars beautifying Pueblo and along with that becomes economic growth and, um, so I'm good with it. I don't know. Counselor Flores?
You guys went through a lot of work to do this. You know, you're both professionals, so I, I'm, you know, I'm really relying on you, but the word I like is sustainability. And that, I, I remember when I twenty-five and City Center, which it wasn't called City Center at the time, is that First Street or First Street? Uh, I remember distinctly the landscaper that did all of that and it was, it was really, really nice. And then one day, the wind blew everything all over the place and it was disgusting because it, all of the padding of the underbase for the rock, I mean, it was a strong wind and destroyed half of the shrubs and stuff. It stayed that way until today. It's still that way today. And it would have been so simple at the time to have forced that landscaper to have had a, what's called a builder's risk policy, because he was still on site. And, uh, he was allowed to walk away from that. I don't know why. But just that simple little thing of forcing that contractor to have uh, what's called a builder's risk policy would have, would have provided the money to redo that whole area, but it, it stayed that way for the whole time. And I don't know where I'm going with this, but I, I, that's always bugged me and I just feel, I, I just, it was therapeutic to me to say that, right? But, but you remember, you were here, Bill, and, uh, but I like your list and, uh, you know, I, I think, eh, you know, we can juggle some stuff around, but, uh, were you expecting, uh, authorization to do all of these? Or just half? Or, I mean, what, what is the, uh, the ask here, I guess? And I guess Larry can, uh, uh, talk about that. We, we're, we're on, uh, your advisory committee. We are appointed by you to be on this committee to give recommendations. Um, this list, it, it came up with past projects, numbers have been increased because of the economics. Um, you know, if there was this much money, sure. I think right now, uh, Larry would like to see a million dollars in beautification in two thousand and twenty-three. That's kind of what I'm hearing. So we're both volunteers. We're just up here because we look good on TV, but there's no TV.
Yeah, when I, when I went to Pueblo Beautiful, I asked them to, uh, come up with the list, uh, of projects that could be done. Uh, how much of this list can be done in twenty twenty-three? If all of it could be done in twenty twenty-three, that'd be great. If half of it could be done in twenty-three, uh, and I mean logistically and, and realistically, how much can be done this year? You know, that, let's, let's get as much done as we possibly can in twenty-three. And then in twenty-four, we can work towards more, because this should be an ongoing program to beautify the cities. Make it as nice and beautiful as we possibly could. It, it should be an ongoing program every year.
So, you know, Larry, I'm hearing that, you know, ongoing program, that's fantastic. That's, that's phasing, that's responsible spending. These things have got to be designed properly. That's gonna take time. Uh, but to have a list and have a program, you say maybe over the next, just like the federal money, the next fifteen years, there's a certain amount of money that goes toward renovation of beautification projects along with maintenance. Um, that's really up to City Council. Larry, you're, you're the leader on this one and also through, uh, Parks Department, Stephen Meyer.
Lana? Madam President, I would ask, um, Stephen Meyer also, when, when he was presenting to the mayor and I, um, he referenced, um, the, the, uh, recommendations that also, um, had a CDOT responsibility and felt that those were likely on a, uh, slower track than the ones that did not have a partnership with CDOT. But I see Stephen on Zoom. Maybe turn it over to him.
Yeah. Laura's right. The, the CDOT project's gonna take a little longer. You gotta get special use permits, uh, approval for the designs, those kind of things. Um, so I still see there's a, Larry's recommendation has a couple of them that, uh, will require CDOT's cooperation. I know we have some upcoming meetings with them to talk about their landscape and, uh, maybe kind of work that out with them and, and see who does what on that, but they will be a little longer to get done. Um, I think that the goal is to get, you know, a big portion of them done this year and then some next year, uh, with Public Works's help, you know, we can get these designed, uh, and then out to bed and then hopefully get them installed, you know, this summer in Nepal.
Yeah, I'm not hard on, on a million dollars with the projects being done in the next six months. What I'm saying is we should start a program by which we get things done on a regular basis and continue a program of beautification. You know, not, not everything has to be done right away, but, and I rely on, on, um, uh, Stephen and Bill and, and, um, that beautiful young lady that Bill is with to, uh, come up, Rebecca, to come up with the proper program to get us really moving forward. Uh, uh, I really, uh, have a lot of faith in you guys to get this thing done. Uh, let's come up with a program and and fund it and, and get it done. That's all.
Great.
And I'd like to, I'd like to apologize for not being there tonight, just kind of filling in under the weather and didn't wanna be down there copping around you guys, so I stayed home.
Well, it sounds like we have support to eventually move this beautification project forward. Um, and what that looks like at a monetary value. I guess maybe you can come back to us and Stephen can come back to us and, um, we, we know some key projects that Atencio has singled out and we'll also all have a chance to maybe go drive by and see exactly what that looks like. And then, you know, maybe we can have a presentation from you guys on what exactly you would put in these areas. Um, you know, just right off the bat, the, the City Center Drive is, I think this is a huge issue right there because of the homeless that hang out in that area. I mean, I've seen them ripping those, whoever put those new flowers out, just walk along and pull every single one of them out. And so I think that that's something that would have to be addressed to on how are we gonna keep the plants in the ground because I do, I have seen them with my own eyes get, get ripped out of those corners right there. Um, Counselor Flores?
I, I just had another comment. You know, CDOT, we're getting the new director here in Pueblo. The, the last director, he, he just retired. But I think of that area right there on Thatcher, is it, that, it's Fourth Thatcher and then the highway to Webmore, I guess, but there's that corner on Vita. And, uh, do you know what's the, the space I'm talking about? Every year they have to come out, I don't know how much time they spend to, to cut all the weeds and they do remedial work there. You know, we, we need to talk to CDOT too at some point. It would save them money, uh, by having something sustainable in that area. I, I get a call from a lady every year on that corner. Mrs. Wainwright, she's a sweet lady and, uh, in fact, this year they cut them early, so she thanked me. She thought I, and I, but I called her and I says, I, I can't take credit for that. But there's a lot of areas where CDOT's responsible. You know, there's areas of going to the Beulah Highway, you know, Pueblo Boulevard. And we need to start having discussion with them too. And I'm not saying that that's your responsibility, but in general, we need to start, talk to CDOT about all these little nooks and crannies that they neglect. And then they go out and, and try to remediate it and, but cutting the weeds down to the roots is still ugly, you know, and but that's another matter, but I just wanted that on public record.
Okay, no, uh, further questions? Thank you guys for your presentation. Hey, last but not least, we have, uh, stormwater design criteria from Jeff Hawkins and Ian Patton.
Good evening, Madam President, members of council. Very good to see you again. I'm excited to be here tonight to talk about the update to our drainage criteria manual. Um, our current manual was developed in nineteen ninety-seven and, uh, in this, uh, timeframe, which has been, uh, close to twenty-six years, we have had numerous, um, policy changes concerning safety and also concerning water quality. So with the surge in development that we've seen throughout the city, we thought this was the opportune time that we bring our manual up to speed and also, um, try to make it to where we could expedite our review process. We were fortunate to get the, um, or to acquire the services of Wright Water Engineers, um, who have extensive experience in doing this kind of work to, uh, help us, um, develop our manual. So a little background on Wright Water. Wright Water Engineers have been in the business for nearly sixty-two years. Ken Wright, the founder, developed the first drainage criteria manual over fifty years ago for the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District in Denver. Since then, Wright Water Engineers has helped cities across the country with the development of their drainage criteria, including numerous cities and towns in Colorado and along the Front Range. Wright Water Engineers also continues to work on a regular basis with the former Urban Drainage and Flood Control District, now known as the Mile High Flood District, uh, with updating their drainage criteria manual for the Denver metro area. This manual is widely referenced across the United States. So without further ado, it gives me great pleasure to present to you Mr. Ian Payton, the president of Wright Water Engineers, who will give you a brief overview of some of the things that, uh, some of the updates in our proposed criteria manual and hopefully answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Jeff, for the kind introduction and Madam President and members of council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. And recognize it's late in the evening, so it's, we have, uh, about two hundred slides and I promise we'll get through them quickly, right? We'll, we'll keep it brief. Um, first of all, I did wanna thank the city's stormwater staff with whom we've worked on this project, uh, Jeff Hawkins, John Sarkisian. Did I pronounce that correctly? Zacharias, and I apologize. I never quite get that right. Noah Stam, as well as Andrew Hayes, has been very supportive on this project. Is this the button here, the? So first of all, what is a Drainage Criteria Manual? And it sounds very boring, especially late in the evening. But actually Drainage Criteria Manual is very, very important. It's a document that provides practical, practical guidance and specific engineering criteria to, in particular, reduce flooding, improve the quality of stormwater runoff in the city and to help facilitate the selection and design of effective stormwater drainage infrastructure. It's one of those guidance manuals that you don't pay attention to until you have flooding conditions. That's when you really care that you have good drainage criteria. So the goals of the updated criteria manual, first and foremost are to promote the public, protection of public health, safety and welfare. This is key. This drove all the decisions foremost in the decision-making in this document. It's also our obligation as professional engineers to protect public health, safety and welfare. Other overarching goal of the updated manual is to provide standard of practice guidance for drainage engineering in the city of Pueblo to reduce the potential for drainage problems and flooding with future development that's going to occur. As Pueblo develops and grows in the future, the guidance in this manual will help promote development with prudent drainage practices to reduce the risk of drainage problems and flooding. And as members of council, I'm sure when you have drainage and flooding problems here, I suspect your phones might be ringing. So we want to avoid those things type of situations. One of the key goals of the updated manual is to promote a streamlined, efficient process for the private sector engineers who are preparing the designs and submitting their designs to the city for review. And then also to help the city of Pueblo design engineers who have to review those submittals and approve them for development. This is a very key, important objective of the manual. And we'll talk in a couple of slides later about the interactive process we had with the development community to work through questions they had and address comments. But to provide guidelines for standard methods, using standard tools and again, streamlining the design review and submittal process, design submittal and review process. Another goal of the updated manual, as Jeff had mentioned, is to facilitate the city's regulatory compliance. The cities, if you hear about the MS4 permit, that's the city's municipal separate storm sewer permit that's regulated by the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. And so this is a new regulation that's been implemented since the last criteria manual went into effect. So one of the sections of the manual is to help facilitate the city's compliance with that. Non-compliance can create other problems. Other cities in the vicinity have had difficulties with compliance with their permit and that can create a host of other problems. So we want to help the city maintain compliance with that permit. Again, that's for the quality of the stormwater runoff in the city. So the draft Drainage Criteria Manual is nearly complete. We've developed this working closely with the city of Pueblo staff. We've had countless calls coordinating back and forth, working through. Again, I want to emphasize the importance of that because the stormwater staff here in Pueblo know their city's drainage infrastructure better, better than anyone and we provide recommendations and guidance, but we certainly needed the input, the close working relationship we've had. So that's been very helpful. We have met with, we've met with the development community on this, in this chamber at the beginning of the project as it was kicked off and then more recently reviewing a draft of the, the criteria manual and received very, very helpful comments. And I want to recognize Councilman Atencio, who participated in those meetings and appreciate his attention and attentive listening to the questions that were raised. So with that process, we received written comments. We've incorporated those comments and they've been helpful and we made some significant revisions based on the comments we received from the engineers representing the development community. This slide just shows, sort of summarizes the major changes that have occurred from the previous Storm Drainage Criteria Manual. As Jeff mentioned, it's 1997 is the prior criteria manual. This is the, the way it's organized with four chapters. And the new criteria manual, it was broken out. Now it's actually 15 chapters. And not that always more is better. We recognize that. But we broke it down in that, that you can see in the existing, on the left there, the existing current manual, the existing manual, that chapter four was drainage design criteria and we, we expanded that into multiple subjects to give more specific guidance because if there's vague understanding, it's more difficult for the design community and it's more difficult for the city's engineers in their review process. So it's more specific guidance using standard practice, standard engineering practice and guidelines. This gives, we don't need to go all through all these, but this shows all the, the different, all the different chapters that have been incorporated in the new manual. For example, one, number four in the updated manual is floodplains. There's FEMA regulated floodplains within the city and there's specific process if you do anything in those floodplains. And so we provide guidance for that type of development to occur or if, where it's prohibited from occurring. That's just one example. I'm just going to show you, I think, three very quick examples, the type of things we've done in the updates. But again, we talked about streamlining the methods and using standard, standard tools and standard practice engineering methods. And for example, on the right here, this is a, it's a spreadsheet computer model for calculating how much runoff comes off a site when you have different rainfall events. And we've, this is adapted for the Mile High Flood District. We use the same engineer who we work with closely, who's developed the spreadsheets for the Mile High Flood District. He worked on this project with us for the city of Pueblo, but adapted it for Pueblo with the unique rainfall that you have here, incorporating the most recent NOAA Atlas rainfall data. That's one standard method. This, I think, was received well by the development community because it's, people are familiar with these spreadsheets. It's a standard way of doing calculations. It's also going to be a really useful tool for city of Pueblo's drainage engineers because they'll have a standard method and it'll be, facilitate that process for reviewing and checking the submittals that they get. Another example is sizing the inlets. I mean, these things that you, you know, may not think about as you're driving down the street, but those inlets on, that receive the storm runoff from the street and, and take that storm runoff and put it in the storm sewer, you have to be sized with certain methods. So that's another example of standard, a standard spreadsheet tool that's been developed, customized for city of Pueblo. And then detention basins for collecting runoff off paved surfaces. You know, that promotes much greater runoff rates and volumes. You need to control that. Otherwise you have flooding and damage to drainages. So sizing the detention basins, there's a, a new tool that the city of Pueblo is going to be using now. That's going to help. Again, the development engineers as well as the, the city reviewers. And then finally, there's new standardized checklist for submittals that was, these checklists were developed, working closely with the city. And there, there are really two purposes for these. Again, it's seeing both sides of it. So the development engineers have a clear list of what they need to submit. And then for the reviewers, they have a clear list of what they need to check and make sure has been submitted. And one thing to avoid the, the submittal and review and re-submittal and that cycle that can occur within complete submittals, this checklist should help streamline it. So you turn it in once and hopefully everything's on the checklist and it checks out and it can go through that review process more quickly. So that's another important component. I think with that, that's it. But I really appreciate the opportunity to work for the city of Pueblo on this. It's an important project and I think important for future generations as well.
Thank you. Any questions, Counselor Martinez Ortega?
It's not a question. It's more of a comment. Good job on putting together these checklists and some of those standardized, like, it's almost like a plug and play. You just put in the numbers and so you're not having to go back and ask her, ask higher ups or whomever or different specifications, or if you're doing it right, it's all there. So I think that investment on the front end of this updating this manual is phenomenal. Thanks. It'll pay off dividends.
Thank you.
Counselor Flores?
Do you, does this manual also incorporate the, the variety of what I call drainage ponds? Maybe that's not the, the right word, but you're seeing more and more the use of these ponds that sometimes are parks. And I'm thinking, I'm thinking about the one on I-25 off of 24th Street, I think, or somewhere in that range where it is a huge pond. I mean, you could build, I mean, if water would drain in there, make a lake, if, if we got that much rain, which we don't, but does the manual govern these new developments that we have and the kind of drainage ponds that are needed? Or is this strictly dealing with the sewer, our sewer system? That's, that's a question.
Ian, if you wonder, I can handle it.
Sure, sure.
Okay, sure. So these are detention ponds that you're asking about, Counselor Flores. What they're meant to do is with the new development comes a lot of impervious area that sheds a lot more water off. So in order to keep flooding from happening downstream of that development, we need to put them in these detention ponds and then release that water as it has historically been released from that site.
Thank you. You're familiar with an area on the south side of town. It's, it's like Hollywood and Vinewood and Sheffield and Lancaster and all of those streets off in that area. That whole development was built without a septic system at all, but it really seems to work. I mean, it's been there over 50 years and I think all of the water drains into Minnaqua Lake. I think that's how it was intended to do. The only thing is that when you take a road in that area, it's like a roller coaster ride because of all of the, you know, I call them ruts, but they're not really ruts. It was intent, it was built that way. So as it rained, the water would just drain off and it just, are we still doing that kind of construction or is that illegal now or whatever?
We're trying not to do that. Yeah.
Because it, I mean, if you go in there, it really works. Because I lived on the south side and when it rains, it does exactly what it was intended to do. And I was always amazed that there was no manhole covers and none of that kind of stuff, but it just seemed to work in that area.
Right. It's like you said, everything runs into Lake Minnaqua. That's kind of how it was designed. But, you know, we try with kind of some of our arterial streets not to have that roller coaster in there. That's kind of, you know, will rattle your teeth, you know, if you're going too fast or if you have a light and race through it.
Well, I mean, I, I am happy that you've got this update. It just sounds like it's going to make life a lot easier for our community and for you and your department.
Absolutely. Thank you. We're hoping so.
The last question I have is, is this something that was necessary to make sure that we're in compliance as a community and as a city? Or was it the manual just updated to make it easier for us to work on these projects?
The second, more easy for us in our review process, but we realized with water, a lot of the water quality standards, we needed to have it updated to meet our criteria.
Well, thank you and thanks for your presentation. That was really informative. Thank you for the opportunity.
How much time do you foresee this saving for developers or anybody that needs to go through this process?
If it's done correctly, we can shave off, you know, with these spreadsheets, that, that I can see really saving a lot of time. That's where we struggled in the past is people are submitting information that doesn't match our criteria. Now with this, it's just like Counselor Martinez Ortega said, plug and play. You just put the numbers in and it will calculate it for the engineer. It'll shave off a week, I'm guessing. So hopefully that will save not only time but money for developers.
And the city, correct, for having to go back and review misinformation and things like that. That's, yeah.
Is this currently in play today or about to be or?
About to be.
About to be. Great. Great. Counselor Atencio, do you have anything?
Yeah, if, some of you might remember that Mark Aliff and I started a committee to deal with this exact situation in that we wanted to streamline the processes by which developers and people in the industry could submit their plans and have them reviewed in a timely manner. Thanks to Jeff and Andrew Hayes and the city departments, they really came step forward. I want to give kudos to you, those guys, in that they listened to the developers and they listened to the, the, the problems that they were having. And what our first ask was that we make it more streamlined so that development could happen and that developers would have the incentive to develop more, especially, uh, single family homes, developing less, things like that. So, but one of the big things, and Jeff and I had this conversation once, was that first and foremost was public safety. In that the drainage criteria was there not, not, I shouldn't say not to help the developers because we were in that, we were trying to help them as much as we could also. But by the same token, we wanted to make sure that flooding wasn't going to happen in neighborhood, new neighborhoods and in also old neighborhoods. So all of this design criteria was first and foremost, public safety and, and consideration of the public. And he's done a great job. I just want to say thank you very much, Jeff.
Thank you.
Ms. Lana, did you have some?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Jeff, could you talk a little bit about whether they'll be available on the Open Gov system? So the process of, of moving them along through the city system will be streamlined as well?
That's a great question. I, I believe so. I, I think we can incorporate that in.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you guys so much for your presentation and updating our manual. And if there's no further business, I conclude this work session at 8:38.